Up mixer, ooh now we're gonna get all I can hear it myself, could you, you could hear me right?
Uh no on the TV
Oh okay, um may maybe grab the volume or the the remote and then just double check and see Okay alright
I did turn that up already
Okay I'm gonna
Gonna turn mine up a bit louder
Now you're there Sarah
Okay great good
Okay, babu then, alright so this is what we're gonna do for today
Okay
Registered with the state are potentially exempted by this line. The next paragraph includes language that says, "The owner-operator of such STRUs need not utilize the subject property as their primary place of residence." So this language seems to remove the owner occupancy requirement. So if those two things together constitute a very significant change in the direction of the ordinance as was proposed in May. And I would suggest that if this language is actually passed this evening, becomes part of an amendment for discussion, then we really have to rewind the legislative process. We really need to give the public the opportunity to read this language. Need an opportunity for more detailed public commentary. And I really think it changes the process entirely. It's fundamentally different from both December and the May ordinance as discussed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reg Baig. I'm at 21 Strong Street in Newburyport. I think you already know my preferences for reasonable regulation of short-term rental units, including getting back to the special permanent requirement, but apparently that discussion has been closed down. So we'll move right on to the loophole amendment about amnesty to be discussed tonight. So hear me out on this analogy. Envision a busy intersection with four-way stop signs. Then after years of yahoos ignoring the stop signs and causing crashes, a traffic light is installed for the common good of public safety. Then envision a loophole proposal to look up the yahoos who caused the crashes and then grant them amnesty to ignore the traffic light and continue carreting through the intersection. That sure makes a lot of sense. So I have a question. How could amnesty to existing illegal short-term rental units, some having caused neighborhood nuisance for years, serve the common public good? Amnesty does the opposite, granting privilege to the few. Recent revelations lead reasonable people to question the entire eight-month process of gutting the proposed ordinance of December 2021. So I have one more question. Who among you will join in leadership to get back on the right track? Let's not settle for a half-baked ordinance. Who can do better than that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I'm Callahan, twain on Warren Street. Disclosure, I have no stakes in any rental properties of any kind, and I have stayed in many short-term rentals from Airbnb, VRVO, and One Fine State. I was not a fan of this proposal when it first came up originally, I think in 2017, when Councilors Vogel and Cameron were around. And I'm not a fan of any proposals restricting short-term units now unless it's licensing and having a hotel-style tax or what have you. There are a couple of things that really bother me, including the street parking idea. Many homes in my area, including Council Shen, don't have driveways. To say that a short-term renter has to have off-street parking is crazy because how do you even know who the car is? Who's going to police that? Are the police really going to walk around and check license plates based on residency? I don't think so. Grandfathering in Plum Island, I think, is a terrible idea simply because it's been done for years. It's very unfair. The city has no idea how many non-PI homes actually are short-term rentals. I know I have like four right in our neighborhood as it is now. And then the investment property amnesty, I guess we're calling it, or I'm not really able to show the term, but I don't agree with investment properties not having to deal with all the new regulations. It seems weird to me that regulations should be for some and not for all. So it's either make it for everybody or nobody. I think it seems to be fully sorted out in subcommittee first, with a way to implement the regulations, map the properties, figure out how to let the owners know how they would need to register, what the penalties to the renters and the homeowners would be if a renter violated noise ordinances and so on, before it comes to the full committee for a final vote. Voting first and then figuring out the details later will not work. I support licenses, assessing the same tax rate that venues like the Inns in Town currently charge guests, but many of the other proposals seem like NIMBY reactions to me. And if you're going to vote for those, I certainly hope that you yourself have not stayed at a short-term rental. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Nikotic, 93, High Street. Thank you, President Shand. I hope the council considers residents, including long-term renters, not a special interest group, but the primary interest for our city government. You have heard from a cross-section of residents in the South End and North End asking you to firmly regulate STRUs in our neighborhoods. Most have asked you to reconsider the December 2021 version of the zoning ordinance, although that is not on the table tonight. Your debate and the public process should be about the December version versus the last-advertised May version. But this process was disrupted by the last-minute introduction of a very substantial amendment, an amendment not made available to you or to the public in advance of your first scheduled vote, an amendment only recently reviewed by the city solicitor, his comments only posted on the city website today. I question that this amendment and the disruption it has created requires the re-advertising and rehearing of any STRU zoning. Please vote no on the amendment and vote no on the May ordinance as it stands. Please restart the zoning process and in the meantime, ask the city administration to enforce current zoning on the mainland. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rita Mahalik, 53, Warren Street. Tonight, I came out to ask you to please consider the controlled STRU scope as proposed in the December 2021 version of ordinance 0246. We need a controlled scope with regulations that are clearly written, easy to understand, and above all, manageable and enforceable. The eight-month process resulting in tonight's proposed May 2022 version has been arbitrarily and capriciously done and leaves our neighborhoods without any guardrails whatsoever. And this is a correction to the email that I sent earlier this evening. I wrote the December 2021 version. I really meant to write, "The May 2022 version can be expanded at a later date." Let's get this one, the December 2021 be our regulatory starting point before putting our residential way of life and residential housing and residential market economy in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Michael Underwood, 21 Beck Street, Newburyport. I don't know what I can tell you guys or say that I already have it. I would just ask that when you consider amnesty, if that's all that we can do, please understand what's happened with us as an organization or as a group of individuals. We're not even organized. We do have a female trail, that's it. But what we all have in common is a horror story of living next to or around an STRU. And so what we've heard time and again, as I've been coming to these processes, is straw man arguments against STRU. So as an example, 17 people got up and talked about the impact of the STRUs, and then we hear a counselor say there's only been four zoning complaints. Please, please, please consider what amnesty is going to do to our neighborhoods and to the people that have already lived with this war. I like strews. I use them, but regulate them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Craychee, 232 High Street. My primary concern is focused on the impact of too many and too unregulated strews on our neighborhoods. It's one thing to have a small business here and there in a neighborhood. In fact, I would actually welcome a newsstand or a coffee shop that my neighbors and I could frequent. But we don't benefit from a short-term rental in the same way that we do from a coffee shop or a newsstand. We'd only use it occasionally, and it operates 24/7. We're not a fan of this proposal. I don't agree with the policy. 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 I don't agree with the policy.
We'd only use it occasionally and it operates 24/7, which is a very different dynamic. Nor would we want more than one of those businesses in our neighborhood at one time. So the concentration of short-term rentals within a neighborhood should be greatly controlled and restricted. Likewise, those other businesses would have occupancy requirements, parking requirements, and hours of operation that are based on their type of business. That doesn't seem to be true for the short-term rentals as it's written now. We've heard about all the parties and goings-on that people have experienced in their neighborhoods. It adds to the number of people and vehicles above and beyond those necessary for the overnight guests. That adds another burden on our neighborhoods from noise, trash accumulation, traffic, and parking demand. There need to be strict occupancy restrictions, not just for the overnight guests, but for also any visitors, as well as parking restrictions for the 24/7 businesses. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. President Shen, Councilors. I spoke last week, and I'll be very brief tonight. I live at 43 Middle Street. I also own 45 and 1/2 Middle Street, and I own 28 Lime Street. I have lived on Middle Street for 35 years. I have, if anyone saw the article in the Daily News by Jim Sullivan, I understand it wasn't online, but it was in print. I have five strews within 100 feet of my front door at 43 Middle Street. Most of these units are valued at between $600,000 and $1 million. My feeling is if someone can afford to buy and develop these condominiums, then they can afford to rent them out on an annual basis. I'm apolitical. This is the first time I've ventured into an issue in the city. But I'm extremely concerned, and I want to remind the councillors, most of them were elected by the residents and neighbors in their ward, not by special interests, not by investors, not to create businesses in our neighborhood communities. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Shen and the councillors. I have had an Airbnb on Neptune Street since 2013. It's been such a godsend to us. It's the only reason why we can afford to live in Newburyport. I was a boat builder and a schoolteacher. I worked as a registered nurse. Those type of professions are kind of out of the reach of Newburyport these days. It's helped us so much. I understand the need for some regulations, so I really recognize all the comments that have been made. I haven't experienced the horror stories, except I've been to one Airbnb that was pretty iffy, you might say. But, you know, it's been a wonderful thing. It's one of the great things happening in the world today. People being able to travel freely to other homes. Now, this investor side of it, I'm not qualified to speak to it directly, but it seems like that's where the regulations should mostly focus, all right? However many Airbnb units you may have in your neighborhood, some people just don't want to have anything strange happening in their neighborhood. You know, that's, we own our properties, and this is America. We could have guests. We could have people that pay to be our guests, you know? So I just wanted to really share my experience and urge the council to be careful with the regulations. Make them clear, enforceable. If there's going to be teeth in that, so be it. I hope it means I can stay in Newburyport. But also, on a side note, the first item on the agenda, October 8th, Native American, Indigenous people, we should have teeth in that, too. That shouldn't be just window dressing, either. We need to really address that, too.
Do we have your address, sir?
Number seven.
Number seven, and your name?
George O'Dell.
Number seven, what? Thank you. Motion to receive and file.
I think he's...
All right. Welcome up there. We did get a comment in the email today, so...
Wait a minute, I think he's coming.
Here he is.
It's like the volume when I was in my office. Why is it so quiet in there? Good evening. How's everyone doing? How's everybody doing? Thank you. Thanks for having me. Lots going on in the city, so I apologize that I have such a long report tonight. So I'm not going to obviously read it to you, but I just wanted to highlight a few things. First of all, I wanted to thank President Shen and Council McCauley for coming to the Field of Honor Ceremony yesterday at Bartlett Mall. Just a really moving ceremony. The guest speaker was Lieutenant Anthony Varras from the Newbury Barracks. He's the commander of the Massachusetts State Police there. That's just really a wonderful event, so hopefully we can keep that going because it's just a wonderful way to, you know, obviously reflect on the tragic events of 9/11. You can honor the men and women who served our country and obviously our first responders, too. So that was just a really great day. And thank you to the Exchange Club for doing that. So we still have the mandatory water restriction in place. We did get some much-needed rain, but we decided to keep the restriction in place. Just a reminder, that means you can water outside from 6:00 to 9:00 a.m. or 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and that's based on your address. So the odd number of houses on odd days, and then the even-numbered houses on even days. And we'll check the reservoir capacity at the end of the week and see where we are. But we're definitely trending in the right direction there, which is great. Lots going on at DPS. DPS is working on several sidewalk projects. I don't know if you've driven along State Streets, but we have two different sidewalk projects that we're working on State Street right now. That big stretch between Garden and High Street, we're going to start working on. That was an incredibly dangerous area, so I'm glad we were able to do that this year. And we're actually also going to install four tree pits there. So we'll have four new trees on State Street at some point, so we're excited about that. And then as you cross High Street, we had another sidewalk project over on the left there that is just finishing up as well, so great job on that. I also wanted to let you all know that the High Street line project, repainting project, is going to take place, could take place this month, but at the latest, October, so we're just finalizing pricing for that. But we're going to reline the streets from Marchess Hill all the way down to Three Roads. And again, this is to address all those mistakes that happened those few years ago. So we're excited to get that done, and it's going to look great for the fall. I'll give you some more information when those dates approach. Perry Way, so there was some work going on down at Perry Way, so the old salt shed has been knocked down, and they're going to pour the foundation for the new salt shed this week. And that was one of those projects in the CIP that you approved this year. And finally, we have begun the search for the next DPS director, so I've got one more call tomorrow. This will be the fourth search firm that I spoke to, but we'll have one by the end of the week, and we'll get that process going. I've heard anywhere from five to 10 weeks, but a lot of that just depends on what format that we decide to move forward with to hire the next DPS director. So we're excited about that. The Parks Reorg Plan, we have a Neighborhood and City Services meeting next week on the 20th. That's very exciting. You know, short-term rentals has kind of taken up a lot of the time lately, so I actually haven't heard a lot of feedback from the community around the plan since the last public hearing. So again, just to remind everyone out there that, you know, we did get an opinion from KP Law. I can make amendments to the plan, and it still can go through this process, but it just has to come from the mayor's office. So again, I just got my first amendment from Council McCauley today, but councillors, if you do have suggestions to the plan, please send them in or make an appointment to come talk to me about them. I'm happy to hear them. Again, I think the plan's good the way it is, but, you know, again, I want feedback from the councillors, and hopefully we can move this forward here by the end of the month. Plum Island, lots going on with Plum Island. One in your packet tonight, you have a transfer order from the Plum Island Beach Stabilization Fund. We're trying to utilize a FEMA buyback program grant that we have to utilize the services of GZA Consulting to get the information we need to get the grant submitted by October 15th. So I'm asking you to waive rules tonight so we can take a vote on that. We have three residents that are interested in this plan, so that's what's going on tonight there. And the dredge, the dredge is here after a long wait. We could actually have it by the very, very end of the month, or it'll be the very beginning of October. We had a great logistics meeting with the Army Corps, GCR, and the contractor last week, so the dredge is here, and we're excited to get that rolling. Sorry, just a couple more things. I wanted to give a huge shout-out to Molly Attenborough for the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Day that took place this past Saturday down at DPS. Just, you know, a lot of moving parts, a lot of staff down there. Molly did a great job. I went down there and checked it out, and it was running like clockwork, so thank you, Molly, for that. We have a cool partnership between NYSE and Newburyport Public Library that's starting tomorrow. We're actually going to make, collaborating on bringing drop-in social work consultations to the library. So Trish Botag, who works for NYSE, is going to start that tomorrow, the 13th, and I would quick, happy birthday to Trish. It's her birthday today, so I want to tell her I'd give her a shout-out. And also, we'll be looking in October, probably that first meeting in October, to start bringing you the cost estimates of 59 Low Street and the Brown School gym. We are just about finished with those. We should be finished with them in the next couple of weeks, but we'll find the best way I'll work with Council President Shen, the best way to present that to the council, but we're excited about that. And then finally, short-term rentals, which, again, you will be taking up tonight. So I just want to thank all of you, city councillors and city staff, for all their hard work on short-term rental units. This has been an incredibly long process, and there are, of course, many opinions on both sides of this issue. I would like to thank all the residents, you know, particularly the ones here behind me, who have contributed to the discussion and brought their experiences and understanding to this issue. The conversation has shown that we clearly need to strike a balance, okay? Protecting our neighborhoods is so critical for our quality of hearing report, and we must respect that STRUs are in some regards a commercial use. At the same time, we recognize that STRUs provide a useful service and a source of economic activity. A sensible balance is needed, and I implore the council to find a path forward here. My administration is committed to serving the city, and your legislative guidance on this issue is critical. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Dr. Philip Stride.
Philip Stride. So I did reach out to Diane today, so the contractor did not get back to us. I thought we'd have a public meeting this week with them, so I'll let you know the minute I hear from them, but Diane did reach out to the contractor.
We have a meeting either way. We know they're going to do that.
Oh, sure. Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
All right. Get it.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
No, we have to talk. I'm sorry. You can do that by office, isn't it?
All right.
Motion to receive and file.
Second. The mayor's comment?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Little premature.
What is that?
Yeah, little premature.
Oh, sorry. I thought she asked for it earlier.
So consent agenda.
Point of order. We are impossible to be heard outside of here, I understand. I'm just letting you know.
Just telling you. I don't have any control over that one.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda.
Consists this evening of the approval of the minutes for August 23rd and 29th. There are five communications, I'm sorry, four, because one's been taken out. The application 107, Chamber of Commerce Fall Festival, October 15th, is to go to public safety. Application 108, which is a blood drive in NRA East on October 7th, public safety. Application 109, the Newburyport Auto Association Auction, has been removed by Councillor McCauley. That's to be taken up in the regular agenda. Communication 430 is FY '22 Year-end Financial Report to go to B&amp;F. Communication 431, Letter Regarding Parks from Mary Gaden Wilkins Hesenger, to go to, is received and filed. There are no transfers. The following appointments. Appointment Joseph Texel, 44 Hale Street, to the CPC until October 1st, 2025. That's to go to Planning and Development. The following appointment is Kevin Hunt. Appointment 339, 14 Tenth Street, as Veterans Agent until 10/1, 2023. That's to go to Neighborhood and City Services. Appointment 340, Jennifer Grosskin, 11 Myrtle Ave, Human Rights Commission, until 10/1, 2025. That's to go to General Government. And the following items are out of their respective committees. Budget and Finance, Appointment 337, Neighborhood and City Services, Order 378. Planning and Development, Order 381. And Appointment 335, Public Safety, the following. Applications 100, 101, 102, 103, 104, 105, and 106 are all removed.
Motion to approve as amended?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right. Regular agenda. The mayor's update?
Well, we already did it, I guess.
Well, it looks like Council...
We do it because I catch it.
Second.
Motion to receive and file?
All those in favor, if you file aye.
Aye.
First readings? None. Communications, none. Transfers?
President, we actually have the late files to deal with, and we have the application 109, which is the Newburyport Auto Association. Maybe we should take that first. That was removed from the consent agenda. Formerly was going to public safety. However, important note, it's an event that happens before the next meeting, so I think that was Council McCauley's idea.
Counsel McCauley.
Motion to approve, excuse me, motion to waive the rules and insert an emergency preamble, and motion to approve application 109.
Second.
Thank you. First, as the clerk had stated, this is happening 9/24. In reviewing the application, this is more an alert to the city that this event was going to go on. They don't need any streets closed, it's going to be on private property, they're looking for a tent, again, on private property. There will be impact to the community because they'll have people there, obviously. So this is really kind of a good feeling for us to just say a motion to approve, and thank you very much.
All right. All those in favor of approving application 109, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right.
So with respect to 433, unless someone has a different idea, I would think we could take that up when we got to committee items. Since it's already been approved, waive the rules has already been approved by two-thirds. And then when we get to the committee items, it's a petition, just so everyone knows, to ask the chair of Planning and Development to remove that item. Makes sense?
I have no concerns.
All right. Any other communications that I missed, Clark Jones?
Let me look. So we have Indigenous people, 430 U7, we have 109, we have 432 that we've, we're all Leads us to orders, I'm sorry, transfers.
Z.
Transfer 138, emergency preamble submitted with respect to Plum Island Beach Fund in the amount of $30,000, moving from that beach fund to FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program. Sam Amo.
Motion to collectively approve the emergency preamble, transfer 138, and the underlying transfer itself?
Second.
Discussion?
Sure, I'm happy to just explain it. So this is something that's been discussed on and off over the years, which is the repurchase of some properties on Plum Island as a result of continued erosion concerns, particularly for properties that may have or may be at risk to experience several losses. FEMA has offered, through FEMA and then NEMA, that the state level has offered this program for some years, but it's...
But I do think that it's time for us, as they're putting up plywood boards on the school to protect it, that we jumpstart this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor McCauley. All those in favor of sending this to Planning and Development Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
So with respect to 433, unless someone has a different idea, I would think we could take that up when we got to committee items. Since it's already been approved, waive the rules has already been approved by two-thirds. And then when we get to the committee items, it's a petition, just so everyone knows, to ask the Chair of Planning and Development to remove that item. Makes sense?
I have no concerns.
All right. Any other communications that I missed, Clark Jones?
Let me look. So we have Indigenous people, 430 U7, we have 109, we have 432 that we've, we're all set. Leads us to orders, I'm sorry, transfers.
Z.
Transfer 138, emergency preamble submitted with respect to Plum Island Beach Fund in the amount of $30,000, moving from that beach fund to FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program. Sam Amo.
Motion to collectively approve the emergency preamble, transfer 138, and the underlying transfer itself?
Second.
Discussion?
Sure, I'm happy to just explain it. So this is something that's been discussed on and off over the years, which is the repurchase of some properties on Plum Island as a result of continued erosion concerns, particularly for properties that may have or may be at risk to experience several losses. FEMA has offered through FEMA and then NEMA that the state level has offered this program for some years, but it's had particularly strict requirements around what properties might be approved. And certainly, there's a tremendous amount of information that has to go into it. What has been different this year is that, I don't want to say there's a sale on it, but it seems like FEMA is offering more attractive terms this year than in the past. And so the city is very interested. Myself, Julia Godfertson, Conservation Commissioner, pardon me, Conservation Administrator, and the Chief of Staff, reached out to numerous people on the island because this is literally dealing with individual properties, individual owners, who may be interested in participating in this program. And at the time, we weren't asking for a firm commitment that, yes, I would like to sell my property, but rather that there was an interest there in getting more information. So with that, as the mayor mentioned in his update, three properties have stepped forward and said they would like to consider this. This funding would basically provide the funding to gather the information needed to file essentially an application. The source of funds is the Plum Island Beach Fund, not to be confused with the sewer fund. So two different funds. This is a fund that we set up when we changed the parking rates at Plum Island Point a few years ago. 10% of the proceeds collected there go into this fund. It's built up a balance of about $50,000. As you can see on the transfer, the request here is for 30, leaving 20K left. And this would go to funding some different consultants, essentially, some of which are probably familiar names like GZA and so forth, if you've been around the island, who do a lot of work. And the end result, I think, would be essentially a completed application to NEMA/FEMA. And then at some point, there would be a decision point for these property owners as to whether they wanted to proceed and actually consummate the transaction or stop at this point. I'm not sure, at the end of the day, what will happen because no one will know until numbers are actually figures. I mean, surely, one would understand that. But I will say that there's been a lot of questions about this over the years and whether it would be viable and whether the offers would make any sense. And it seems like this is the only way to find out. So I think it would make sense to be able to find that out and then we'd be able to know in the future if this is something that we wanted to pursue. And then finally, just speaking to the emergency, like everything else, you know, they're on their schedule, we're on our schedule, and this is just the way that it works out. But this would enable this effort to move forward immediately rather than waiting. And the dredge is coming, as you heard. So I was happy to sponsor it and I hope that it will gain support and we can move it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Z. Further discussion? Councillor Wallace?
Sure. First, I have a question. Is this the hazard mitigation plan that's required by NEMA and FEMA? Or is this an actual application for grant?
I can try and Andy's here too, but these are two separate things. The hazard mitigation plan, the HMP, is one thing that's moving on its own track. And then this is an actual mitigation grant program, HMGP. But I'll defer to Andy if he can give more detail.
Councillor Z is correct. And in that case, the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Plan is actually already into the officials. We're just waiting for them to get back to us and confirm their approval. So in terms of relationship to the plan itself, which is really to show that we're making advanced efforts in advance of hazards to try to mitigate or avoid those problems, they already have that in hand and they're just doing the formal process to confirm that it meets their requirements.
Just, sorry, one more question before you go. If I may?
Yes.
So can you just refresh my memory? So the hazard mitigation plan, that's every five years, correct?
Yes.
And so that, this is, the one that they have now is the most recent?
Correct.
Okay. And then, but the grant, we don't know for sure if we're going to get it? Or we're just, it sounds like it's a pretty good chance?
We have favorable feedback from them based on the context and the situation we have here. Involving, I mean, we can sort of elaborate, but in essence, they've basically given us a good read that if we were to apply for it, we had a high likelihood of getting the award. Plus, the funding is at a better ratio. As Councillor Z mentioned, there's a better ratio essentially of reimbursement. However, we don't know the numbers in this. As Councillor Z mentioned, it's very important for us to be able to spend relatively small money right now to find out if we can leverage that, those funds. And then you would, at a later point, be able to decide whether or not the city wanted to commit the matching funds for the buyout, so to speak.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Hang on, Director Port.
So most of you know that I live on Reservation Terrace and so I'm in that erosion zone area. My wife and I have decided not to be one of those three units that have applied or have interest in the process for a number of reasons. For us, I mean, we want to stay there. We don't want to have to give up our house. I do have some general questions and I expressed my comments and my opinion when we were asked to move money from, to pay for the chlorination station on Plum Island. And we ended up having to take it out of Plum Island designated funding. Again, I'd like to say for the record, Plum Island produces over $10 million in revenue to the city. And as of now, over the last few years, there hasn't been a single penny expended on Plum Island from the general tax base. There hasn't been a road paved there. There hasn't been a sidewalk done under the road repavement program. And we, as Plum Island residents, get almost nothing in the way of services from the city. So I am not in favor of the funding source. I think that the whole city should support Plum Island. We support the city. We pay into the water and sewer rates. We paid for our own betterment to have the water and sewer placed. We're still paying for that. And I just don't think it's fair, that every time there's a Plum Island need, that there's a special designated Plum Island fund to pay for what should be paid by our community. We pay for things on the mainland all the time from city funds.
Thanks, Councillor Wright. Further comments? Councillor Preston?
Yeah, I don't even know who to direct this question to, but when the Plum Island Fund was set up, what was the intention of that particular fund?
Councillor Z?
I'll take a shot at it. Yeah, so I mean, this specific fund had, was generally focused around beach concerns, keeping the beach clean, beach maintenance, erosion. This was a joint effort with the Harbor Commission at the time. There was a tremendous amount of negotiation at the time. So it kind of has about five or seven different line items or bullets that are sort of the scope of the allowable uses. But it generally focuses around beach concerns, beach erosion, properties, you know, abutting there and so forth. It's been a few years, so I can't remember the exact language we used, but that's the general crux of this fund. The other one, obviously, was more specific to the sewer infrastructure and the things that relate to that. If your memory is any better, feel free to try and help me out, but it's what I can pull out of my head at the moment.
I agree, yeah. That's the general idea.
Have we utilized funds from this fund previously and so, or what?
Yeah, this fund has only existed now for, I want to say, about two years, is my recollection. I don't remember having made an appropriation out of it yet. It's essentially just been building this balance. Every time somebody pays at the lot, 10% goes into it. I can't remember off the top of my head any appropriation we've made. So I think this would be the first, or nearly the first, coming out of it, yeah.
Further questions? Councillor Vogel?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question. I'm not sure who to direct it to. How did we come up with the $30,000? Can we get a, sometimes a breakdown on that?
We actually looked out for proposals from consulting firms. So it's based on a firm number from consultants as opposed to a number pulled out of a hat. It's basically, in essence, the work for the consultant to provide a benefit cost analysis, which is required to the federal government to show, in essence, you know, are they spending the right amount of money on this? Or is it, you know, something they're going to lose overall, given the risks long term? So there's analysis done based on the site conditions and the property of the value, the value of the property itself, which is actually determined by appraisal. So it's really the appraiser's work and then the engineer's cost assessment, which is looked at by FEMA. And if they find out that it's more than a one, then it sort of gets a favorable reading.
Can I follow up? Thank you. So... Does, does the, this $30,000 is the cost of this to receive these funds? Does that include paying back the cost of the funds to get these funds?
Oh, that's a great question. Yeah, if we do receive the award, you know, for this particular buyout, then we would be repaid the cost of this particular assessment here. If we were not successful, then that wouldn't be the case. But again, we're hopeful that that would be the case at the end of the day. Of course, it requires us going through with the transaction at the end, but we would be reimbursed essentially, these funds here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Donahue? I think you had your hand up.
Thank you, New President Shan. I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I do want to agree with the at-large councillor from Plum Island that... I don't agree with the funding source. I think that there are much better uses for what that funding source is meant for, such as more Mobi mats to help with both accessibility to the beach as well as really helping a lot with, what's the word? Erosion, sorry. With the erosion and through the dunes. So I'd have to agree and say that, you know, this might really be something we should consider asking the city to fund and keep those funds that are the Plum Island Beach Fund for things that are going to help with erosion and accessibility to the beach. Mobi mats are not cheap. We have often heard that there's not enough of them. We would love to see a stretch so that people can actually attend the beach accessibly. But that's more of a pipe dream until there's funding for it. And Plum Island Beach Fund is exactly what that should be for. So I won't be supporting this because of the funding source as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Donahue. Councillor Lane?
I just have a question for Director Port. Is there any, so talking about these funds, is there any funds set aside for if we do have a bad season this year, for rocks, for supplies? I know that when this happened last year, there was a little bit of a fire drill and the residents were told, do what you got to do.
Sure. It's a great question. I actually had offered to maybe defer to the Finance Director, Ethan Manning, who I believe is connected via Zoom. He may be a better person to answer that question. I'm sorry, because it typically falls in a category that our office doesn't directly involve with because it's during the emergency itself. But he may be able to clarify.
So, Councillor, so the question was, are the undermanning from the prior corporation for the shoreline protection out there?
What funds do we have set aside for if we do have a bad season to offset any of the costs of things like stone or more bags, should those fail and so forth? Have we taken that into consideration?
That's a good question. So yeah, other than the normal sources, you know, like free cash or this Plum Island Beach Fund, there's really only a small balance of approximately $5,000 left from the last shoreline protection project out there. And then, of course, if it's related to our sewer, there's that utility fund. But yeah, no, we'd really be looking at free cash or happens to be snow and ice-related spending from that account as well.
Can I just follow up?
Sure.
Is there any communications with the state to get more funding at this point?
Ethan, I can try and...
Looking at...
Well, I could just help by filling in a little bit of context more on the policy side. I mean, the finance side too. But there are two things that are a little different this year. First is we're on the precipice of the dredge. Last year, we couldn't even see the dredge over the horizon. So it's a very different environment now. Within, you know, four to eight weeks, we're expecting to actually see sand go on the beach. You know, one good thing about inertia with Army Corps is once they are going to do something, then it's very hard to stop them. So I'm hopeful that for once, that inertia works sort of in our favor. And based on the conversation we've had, and there's an MRBA meeting in a couple of weeks for a more in-depth update. But they're bringing, they're going to have two dredges, most likely. They're going to be dumping sand on the beach pretty quick. That's number one. Number two is we're always asking the state for more money, almost every day. Right now, though, that focus and that effort has really been on asking money for the non-federal share, as they call it, of the dredge. So whenever the Army Corps does a dredge, they always have a place they default to. In our case, it's an offshore, nearshore dump site. They want to go out there and just dump the sand. We essentially have to cover the differential to put it on the beach rather than putting it out in the ocean. So we've been focusing our efforts on getting the state to help pay that. And you'll notice that we have not had any transfers come in here to say, hey, can we fund even part of that non-federal share? So I think we've been pretty happy about that. And honestly, getting more rocks was, it was a Herculean lift at the time from a regulatory standpoint. And I think, given that the dredge is on the horizon, our efforts are in the right place to get the money towards the sand, which is where things are going. And then if you want to be part of the next big push, it'll be that once the sand is in place, we are really going to be advocating heavily for some sort of modification to the jetty so that this is not just a cycle where they put the sand on the beach, the underlying condition doesn't change, and then the sand just goes back out. And then we're right back here in a couple of years, talking about the same thing. So, you know, there isn't money, like, sitting in an account for a stone, per se, but I think that that's a little bit of difference in the context this year, mostly positive as compared. So I'm hopeful and I know residents are very much looking forward to seeing that sand.
Thank you, Councillor Z. Further questions? Councillor Khan?
I just want to make a motion to amend the source to the general fund. Transfer from Plum Island Beach Fund to the general fund.
Second.
I'm not sure we can.
We can't?
No.
Well, two things. One is free cash is currently frozen. So, you know, until November, when they certify free cash, we can't tap that. And second is I think, yeah, we would need the administration to do that, if they're willing, sure. But I don't know if that's possible.
May I follow up with that then? Is there, yeah, is there another source then? Because I am very much compelled by, you know, reading the objective of these funds and understanding the implications to residents who are there and the commitment. You know, we at large kind of talk to all residents and understand that. So from the funding source, I'm curious, from Ethan, is there another source? That wouldn't then touch into this fund?
Ethan?
Sure. Councillor, we did look at other funding sources. And really, since free cash is frozen, like Councillor Z said, this is really the best funding source to tap into immediately. But that's it. If we get the grant scheme through, we'd be getting, you know, $27,000 up to $30,000 back through the grant. So the net outlay is only $3,000. But there would always be the option to, you know, replenish this for cash in the future.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor McCauley?
I don't have any questions. I'm just going to make a statement that I am going to support this, where it's coming from today. And I do acknowledge the challenge of keeping Plum Island money on Plum Island for its needs. With doing so, I do think we have a cash issue right now in terms of timing. I think that this is appropriate use of the funds. I hear from the Finance Director and I will ask through the administration that they replenish these funds once free cash is available to us to be able to keep these funds available for an emergency or an ad hoc type of situation that always happens on Plum Island. You know, this is, this is a situation where this program is to buy people's houses. And so that is going to require city funds from across the board, not just Plum Island, yet another Plum Island betterment fee or something like that. So I do think, I understand the concerns of siphoning off $30,000, but I do think that this is an appropriate use of it so that we don't lose momentum and we can capture that money. Thank you.
Councillor McCauley? Councillor Vogel?
Thank you, Council President. I too stand in favor of spending the $30,000 now, particularly in light of the fact that there's a pretty good chance, or a good chance, that we'll be reimbursed. I understand the concerns of the councillor at large. I understand the concerns of Plum Island. I think we need to spend the money. And if it turns out to be that we don't get the grant, then I certainly will fully support the reimbursement of it. But I think time is of the essence. I think we need to get it done. I'm satisfied with the answer that there's a really good chance that we'll get all but $3,000 of it back.
Thank you, Councillor Vogel. Further discussion or comments? All right. Councillor Donahue?
And I apologize if I'm a little green on this one, but is there an amendment that could be made to sort of ensure that when free cash is not frozen, that we could put it back from that? Okay. So it's not something we can just make an amendment for? Like a caveat? Okay. Okay, I'm good.
All right. So the motion, Court Jones?
The motion is to collectively approve the emergency preamble and transfer 138. Would you want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Z?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Both. Did I not say Vogel? I read your mind.
Okay, go ahead then. I'll be a yes.
I knew that. All right. So that's 11 zip. Thank you very much.
No second reading appointments, orders?
Yep. We only have one order, which is an approval of prior-year bills.
Motion refer to budget finance?
Second.
All those in favor moving to budget finance? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinances.
Gee whiz. So that leads us to ordinance 46. And as everyone knows, on the floor, there's an outstanding amendment to Page 12, Section 8, exception pre-existing STRUs made by Counselor Preston, seconded by Counselor Vogel. That's on top of an existing motion to approve, but the discussion, I presume, would start up again if the president so wishes right there.
Right there. So.
Point of order?
Sure.
Because I was not here at the last meeting, am I still allowed to participate in this motion?
I would say yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the city solicitors nodding his head yes too, which gives me great comfort.
And I have a point of order.
Council Vogel?
So what we have on our desk is sort of considerably different than what we left.
Yeah. Want me to speak to that, or does anyone other than I wish to speak? So, yes, there is. It's the same ordinance with changes. Whether one thinks they're substantial or not substantial, they look to me as mostly not substantial changes, mostly with all due respect, legal tweaks. So, but we should acknowledge it's a different version of your Paragraph 8.
Yes.
So we could go forward and amend your amended motion with another amendment, or someone could, like you, entertain a federal, I'm sorry, a friendly amendment to incorporate those changes that are on everyone's desk.
Counselor Preston?
Yes, I would be, thank you very much, Clerk Jones. We discussed this earlier today, so, but yes, I would be very open to a friendly amendment. Again, I would characterize these as legal tweaks to the language. I don't presume that they would be terribly controversial, but I will leave that to the rest of the council. But I will certainly entertain a friendly amendment to include these amendments to my amendment.
Who is the second on that?
Is that? Yes, there is no second on it. She would need it. Are you making that motion to?
Yes.
I'll second it.
So second it. I'll go to it.
Ouch.
There's a slight point of order.
I just wanted to make sure I dropped it. Wait a minute.
Make sure it's down. It looks like there's just a bit of a scribbler's error. You go A, B, C, you blank out D, and then you went to E. Should D be E on Page 12, where the amendments are, where the changes are?
Yes.
That's true.
Okay.
So A, B, C.
D, E.
E is now D.
Yeah, okay.
F is now E.
Counselor Preston?
Would you like for me to read this into the record, or are we good, given that it's on everyone's desk?
I think it should be read in.
Okay. Can I do that now? Yes. All right. So, motion to amend ordinance 046, Paragraph 8 to read. Exception for pre-existing short-term, sorry, STRUs, notwithstanding any conflicting provisions within this section V-G, any STRU in existence prior to the adoption of the section Vs-G may continue as a permitted use without alteration except as such alteration may further comply with the terms of this section V-G applicable to non-accepted units subject to the following provisions. A, for purposes of this exception, an STRU shall be, quote, "a residential unit used for residential occupancy for a period of fewer than 32 consecutive days by a person or person who does not reside in the residential unit as their primary residence in exchange for payment or other consideration. The owner/operator of such STRU need not utilize the subject property as their primary place of residence." B, this exception shall apply only to the owner/operator of such STRU as of May 31, 2022, and shall not be transferable to any future owner/operator. C, this exception shall only apply where the subject STRU was properly registered with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and only as it then existed as of May 31, 2022. D, continued operation, sorry, and that would strike the former D, so now the new D would be continued operation of such STRUs, shall require the issuance of a zoning determination in accordance with footnote, L, that's L or an I?
L.
Thank you. Of Section V-D, Table of Use Regulations, establishing the present characteristics of the STRU and determining compliance with the requirements of this exception. II, the issuance of a valid license from the Licensing Commission pursuant to a related general ordinance, Chapter 9, Article 11 of the Newburyport Code of Ordinances. And III, continual registration with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And E, the owner/operator of such STRU shall be limited to the operation of a maximum of one total STRUs within the city of Newburyport. Excluded from this count shall be any units located within the Plum Island Overlay District per Section 7 of this Section V-G.
Thank you for reading that in, Counselor. All right. Discussions. Counselor Lane?
I just have a question about the 32-day consecutive period. I know a lot of leases, long-term leases, when they expire, they go into a tenancy at will. So that's putting basically STRUs on tenancy at will. So anything that's rented out in a lease and then runs out goes into a 32 days would put them in that category. So that's impacting a lot more residences for long-term as well. That's my only concern with the 32 days. Is one of the, would five counts could address that thought?
Let's see, Counselor Cameron has his hand up.
Yeah, thank you. And it might be good to get some legal advice here. A constituent did email all of us, I think, and he mentioned, he phrased it differently. But, yeah, essentially, tenancy at will, if you're a long-term landlord, you may have a one-year lease with somebody, but a lot of times people will do month-to-month, so a tenancy at will. And I know the intent of this is not to harm that at all. And the definition of short-term rental unit has always been 32 days or less. So I assume because you are actually using it for a long-term, as a long-term rental, tenancy at will would certainly be allowed and continued. And again, I don't know, legal advice might be.
So I believe that the tenancy at will is a continuation of the terms and conditions of the one-year or multi-year lease. So all it is is a 30-day extension. It's not a new contract. So I don't think it applies to STRUs, but I'm happy to have the real attorney weigh in.
Me too.
Though I do play one on TV.
For you, Madam President. Counselor, to the question about the 32 days and the tenancy at will, I think the distinction here is not the time limit, but you'll see in this definition, which, by the way, tracks exactly the definition in the earlier part of the ordinance, that the difference here is that a person does not reside in the residential unit as their primary residence. So in fact, someone extending over from a year lease into a tenancy at will, the presumption would be that's still their primary residence, therefore, they would not be picked up in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions? Counselor Vogel?
Well, I, mine goes off on a little bit of a different turn, if I may, through the President. So my concern, only with this, my only concern with this section is with E, that allowing only one short-term rental, which means that in some cases, there will be individuals that will need to give up units that they currently have, right? So I don't understand, or I'm concerned about how that will be. If, I know that if I were an investor and I had several units around town and we passed this, I certainly would like a little bit of time or have it spelled out somehow how I would have to divest myself of those interests. And have we thought about that at all? And I would like some feedback, and then if you would like, I can motion maybe some ideas.
Anyone want to speak to that one? Counselor McCauley?
Yeah. I'll partially answer the Counselor at Large's. I think, I think part of your, part of the answer is that in Section 9, we move the effective date, for example, where it says December 1st for licensing. I would be prepared to offer an amendment to move that to June 1st, which would allow almost a nine-month period for somebody who has, who doesn't necessarily comply to be able to divest themselves or make alternative plans. But we're not there yet. In terms of E, it is consistent with everything else that we have in the ordinance about having one unit only, one operator, one unit, except on Plum Island.
Is that a motion now, or you want to wait till we get?
It's not a motion now. I'm holding off while we resolve A before we get to N.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, I just want to, I know some counselors may want to get into the specifics of the amendment and alter language, and I may take part in some of those conversations. But as I said at the last meeting, I still am very much opposed to the concept of making this exception for essentially absentee owners. We did receive some, much for the same reasons as I've said before. You know, if you track this whole issue from 2017, when Counselor Vogel and myself and Counselor Zede were on the council and it first started to get talked about, in a way, when I came back on the council, I was kind of hoping you'd all be done with it, but you weren't, and it was very contentious. It was new to the state. I think House Representatives had just passed their version, and they were waiting for the Senate and then the governor to sign it. You know, Boston, upon which our model originally was based, was 2018, 2019. You know, there've been a lot of changes to this, and I know it's contentious. And just in my field of vision, you know, getting back on the council in January, you know, where we all started was the version from December 2021, which I know many constituents, many constituents have said, "Let's go back to that." We did make a series of changes from pretty much eliminating most special permitting, which was a big deal for some constituents, but we felt it was too onerous on the ZBA. It would take the ZBA three years to get through what was currently in the pipeline. So we got rid of that, basically. We, there is still a small exception for that. We really relaxed the parking, and I think we've come a long way towards allowing people to either do the home share or the limited use. And I think we would see more residents using it in bringing tourists, visitors. And I know there's still, we get still objections about Plum Island. Plum Island is a very different kind of residential area than the mainland, so-called mainland. And it is, you know, it is in fact very much based on tourists. The mainland is much more, you know, residential. So I think, you know, to this amendment, again, we're not, we're not changing anything out on Plum Island, but I think, as the zoning administrator shared with us that Excel spreadsheet, I mean, there are 41 investor properties that we would basically be giving allowance, and that's pretty significant. That'd be like taking Milk Street from Federal to Lime Street and turning that into a commercial hotel. Or if you want to try a different ward that's less dense, Lafayette Street and Ward 4, it's probably got, you know, 15 to 17 houses on each side. I mean, we're basically really changing the character of Newburyport by allowing the investor piece. I think giving people time to, whether it's to divest, sell, and make money, because they surely would, or rent long-term, which at least two investor-type folks who are also local residents, they've said they would just, you know, use long-term rentals. So, you know, I'm very much opposed to this amendment, and in fact, I think it would, it would kill the whole zoning for me. So I just want to say that as we get into the minutia on this.
If I might, I just want to reiterate, from my perspective, we're on the friendly amendment. We're actually not on the amendment itself.
So I can say that all again later on?
No.
I won't.
May, Madam President and Clerk. So the original motion to amend was made.
Correct.
The firster and the seconder can just do a friendly amendment, is my understanding. They don't need another vote.
Yes, you do. I mean, in this case, I think, not to overrule you, because I don't have the authority to overrule you, but a friendly amendment can have a vote or cannot have a vote. It's sort of almost like a policy question, but I think in this case, we should.
Okay.
And so I have a motion made by Counselor Preston, seconded by Counselor Vogel, the friendly amendment to insert this language on the floor, to make it part of your motion to amend.
Yes.
So let's vote on that.
I would like to ask the council president to call a vote on this, on this friendly amendment, so we can begin debate. Thank you.
Sorry, call a vote? Is that what you just said?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Call a roll.
Call a roll.
It's a roll.
For the friendly amendment?
Yes.
Do you all understand? Roll call of it, or friendly amendment?
I'm ready if you are. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zede?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion to amend is on the floor with this new language.
Now, Counsel Vogel?
I'd like to reiterate some of what the at-large counselor said. I don't really have questions about individual line items. I do think the friendly amendment is better than the previous version. However, I'm not a fan of amnesty, in particular this. And I want to share my ideas. It's just not, I'm just not against them. It's just, in the three years that I've toiled in this, I've had four non-residents call me for input, four out of 41, 31, 50, whatever the number is. That means that they're not engaged. They don't care. They care sometime, but they, over three years, four have reached out to me to actually offer an opinion, offer opposition, offer suggestions, et cetera, along the way. So in writing an ordinance for this, we try to write them for 99% of the people and then deal with the exceptions either one way or in another. And what we're doing here now, I believe, in this amnesty provision, is writing an ordinance for, to include every exception out there potentially, starting with this, because it does weaken the amendment, it does weaken our defense of it, all of that. I think, in my opinion, and I've been pretty straightforward on that, the May 2nd version strikes the balance. It's not perfect, but I do think it strikes the balance. That gives residents more of a say. Residents who would like to do this, have to live with their neighbors, and investors have a place on Plum Island to do that. We're not banning all investors, but from the mainland, we're suggesting that this is a resident community on the mainland and where, if you want to be pure investment in short-term rental, we've created a community for you out in the Plum Island Overlay District to be able to do that. So I do think it strikes balance. I will not support amnesty, and thank you very much.
For the court, any comments? Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. And I do have a comment, something I'd like to sort of put out there for everybody if it hasn't occurred. First of all, I just want to say, you know, I definitely struggled with the amnesty piece when it first presented, wasn't really in favor of supporting it, really wanted to see, you know, more of those units back on the market at market value for long-term rentals. But once I really looked hard at the numbers and the breakdowns, the average with amnesty is roughly 10 per ward in the most dense wards and a total of 11 in the other three wards. But my biggest sort of revelation in what has made me, given me a little more comfort is the knowing that there's quite a few units in current practice that are condos. And there's been quite a few comments about the condo units. But what I think it's really important for everyone to understand is that it is incredibly standard language in condo docs and bylaws to not allow that type of use. It's spelled out in probably 90 to 95% of homeowners associations condo docs. And so those units that are condos are going to have to get licensed regardless if they have amnesty or not. And as soon as they go to get their license to continue with their amnesty, they have to provide proof that their condo association does not disallow that use. They're not going to be able to provide that proof in at least 90% of the cases. There may be a few exceptions where those documents are more like friendly handshakes in small associations, but I think that the fear that there's as many units as there are is that factor's not being considered, that, that the condo units are all going to become irrelevant once they try to get a license. So I do think that's a key component, because it actually knocks out quite a few units and leaves us with a much more palatable number that's not so dense and so expansive in the most dense wards, which are in fact, two and three, not including Plum Island. So this has been something that I've been weighing every different aspect of, and I certainly want to come to some sort of conclusion that's fair. But when, when considering how many units we're actually going to be getting through amnesty, it's not the number that we have today, and it's only going to get smaller. It's never going to get bigger. So those are some of the factors that have really seeped in for me these last few days and really looking hard at the, the actual numbers. So I hope some folks can find some solace in that and understand we're all trying to look at this with the most fair lens as possible. So that's what I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Donahue. Further, Counselor Preston?
Thank you. So very much a follow-on to my fellow at-large counselor. So the, the council on Friday got updated numbers from our zoning enforcement officer. Thank you very much, Jennifer. She, she and the clerk's office have done some yeoman's work on this to, to take the, the information of the units that were registered with the state as of May 31st of this year, cross-reference them with voter registrations, so that we could have a better understanding of exactly how many units we're talking about with amnesty. Ultimately, the number is, the number of units that exist on the mainland that are not owner-occupied, that are registered with the state as of May 31st of this year, is 41. Of those 41, I then went through the numbers and scrubbed out with my amendment having the restriction of only one unit per owner on the mainland. I went through and scrubbed through that, and there are a total of 10 more units that would be, that would fall off because the owner of the unit owns more than one unit in the city on the mainland, and therefore, they would only be able to, to continue forward with one unit. So 10 of those would further fall off the list. We are talking about a maximum of 31 units. It will never go any higher than that. We will never have the opportunity to offer amnesty to any more units than this. I feel it's a very fair balance for us to allow those units to exist. The Chamber of Commerce has come forward, sent us all a letter today stating how much they felt that these units are really important to the downtown businesses, and I think that we need to really consider that this is a fair balance of our situation. We're allowing for a small number of units to continue forward. I yield.
Counselor Zied?
Thank you. Like everybody else, I, I think that the, the two weeks was helpful, just to have a chance to pause for a second. In the last meeting, I expressed some openness to considering amnesty, and I stood on this floor really trying to find something that could allow us to move forward. I think anybody who's watching tonight probably should be having palpitations, because I'm not sure where this is headed. But in the end, I'm not going to be able to support the amnesty, and I'll tell you why. I want to explain why, a couple of reasons. First, and most material is, there's been a lot of focus on the policy question, you know, having 31 units or 41, and how many fall off. I think what's missing is this section, despite the attorney's best efforts, creates a structural weakness in the, in the ordinance. And so the, the risk factor is that if you get challenged on this section, this section doesn't fall alone. It has the very likely potential to peel down the whole thing, and now you're talking about a much broader impact. So that, to me, is the core legal risk. So it doesn't matter, it could be one unit we were talking about, it could be 1,000 units we were talking about. It is illogical to me to create that structural weakness that could be used to create a broader hole. Now, is that something that any of us could prove definitively tonight? Of course not. Nothing is proven until it goes into litigation, but we do have to use heuristics and sort of what we know, and, you know, I think Attorney Eichmann's here. He tried, and I think that's why I voted yes on the, the affirmative, because it does improve the language, but it doesn't change the fact that you're creating the potential for that, for that. And so just to be clear about the practical impacts, you could be talking about taking a small hole and making it a really big hole for a lot of folks, and that could have citywide impact that is not, and it could take many years and hundreds of thousands of dollars to figure out. So that's the first reason. Second one is, I just wanted to address the substantive aspect. I, I don't think people are concerned about that, is this amendment substantive compared to two weeks ago? I think the question is, is this substantive compared to what was advertised in May? That is a subjective question, but I, I do think that, you know, there's arguments to be made that it's, it's questionable compared, because that, that's how zoning works, and I've certainly been involved with ones that went so far as to have to be read advertised and so forth. So I just wanted to clear up what I think people are asking about, and I, I concur that that's a sensible question. Third one is, in response to a comments made earlier, condo docs are not really a defense to how we build laws here, so we can't just sort of rely on the fact that maybe condo associations, and they are generally, they're disallowing this sort of thing, but people are looking to us to create the city policy, and so we, to me, it's a little bit tenuous to rely on a third party whom you don't know, plus could change at any time for any reason. And then final last couple of things is, with due respect, I'm, I'm not sure that the chamber's letter helped. It sort of made the argument about the commercial aspect of this, and that's been a core concern, right, is it's a half-half beast here, you know, and, and trying to figure out which parts of it are residential and which parts of it are commercial. But many have stood up and said, you know, is it really the, the neighborhood's problem to solve the lack of, of lodging? And generally, I would come down on the answer is no. So with all of that said, I mean, I, I desperately want to compromise, but honestly, I actually think this is going to take us further away from the eight that we need on the underlying, and that's just simple legislative math that I can do now after seven years of, of basic education. And so for all of those reasons, I will oppose this amendment, and then I guess we'll, we'll have to see what we go to on the, on the backside. Thank you.
Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I mean, we do have Attorney Eichmann here, so I wouldn't mind asking the question about, I think, in terms of changes that would require a reposting of this, and I, I would be curious to hear that, that answer. I saw your face. But like the amnesty provision or some of the amendments, because what, and, and as you're walking here, let me just say a few more things, is that during the, the joint hearing with the planning board, there's certain things that you learn about, about what's before you from an ordinance perspective, and amendments are, are done many times to meet kind of those, those conversations. So I would be curious to hear what Attorney Eichmann says on that piece. Thank you. Through the chair. Thank you, Attorney Eichmann.
Through the chair. To the counselor's question. As a, as a matter of law, legislative bodies are allowed a lot of latitude with respect to considering changes to a proposed amendment that has gone through a planning board hearing. The general sort of dividing principle is, if the council is considering amendments that would essentially fall within the range of what the planning board was looking at, they may be perfecting it, they may be clarifying it. Those things are allowed without having to send it back to the planning board for another hearing. In this instance, there is no short-term rental ordinance in the city. So clearly looking for the planning board is a pretty broad slate. And, you know, the fact that some residents, existing STRUs would be allowed was not discussed there, I don't think that's dispositive in the sense of it has to go back to the planning board. I think the better answer is that, no, it does not. The planning board does not have to consider every aspect of this before it issues this recommendation in order for the council then to make changes when it gets to the floor.
May Counselor Khan?
Yes. So just to kind of rewind a little bit, because it has been so long. I, I just want to remind people that we have been talking about short-term rentals for more than just even last year. It started before, pre-pandemic. That was the last kind of public hearing we had upstairs on this, in the City Hall, in the City Hall auditorium, before we ended up having our kind of change in our, our lives, I guess, with hybrid meetings and going to Zoom. But I remember that room was packed, and I know, I heard earlier that we've only heard from four of the people that have kind of some ownership. There was, it was a full room of folks who kind of represented both sides. And I think as, as we do our job here, it's always like looking at the different perspectives and trying to strike a balance, and I, I recognize that we're all trying to get there, because none of this, especially in ordinance like that, that's kind of new, does require some give and take. My perspective on how the amnesty came to fruition was at that hearing that was at the Senior Center with the joint meeting with the planning board and the Planning and Development Committee, and it was committee of the whole. And it was stated by both sides about what could we do for those that were already invested in providing this service of short-term rentals, but could strike a balance in the licensing to make sure we regulate it? Because right now, we understand that there's many STRUs in practice today that are not being regulated because they're not being licensed. So we recognize there's a deficiency, and we're trying to fill that, that, that need, that need that could really answer a lot of the questions in terms of how do we make sure the neighborhoods are not going to be negatively impacted? The balance that was struck was those to do some investigation to see, and I was one of the initial ones that thought about, how could we benefit Newburyport residents? Those who have put in the money and have an investor unit, how could we maybe include them? And what we heard is you cannot just really say just an amnesty for Newburyport residents, and then that started the whole conversation, and hence, here we are with this amendment. The, the things I want to point out, though, is, and I think I mentioned this last time, so I'm sorry for repeating myself, because I know we really just want to talk about the amendment and get to the vote. I, I do, I do this all the time, is look at the Airbnb listings, and it's, it's something, if you don't put the dates in, you could see everything that's in the city. And reading, listed them, and then reading the reviews, it does tell me, this is right now not licensed, but it gives you some insight on how the owners are presenting their property and marketing it. And I feel like a lot of the issues I have heard, especially the neighborhood impacts, you know, if you think about how long these have been running, and, you know, talking with Marshall Murray, I always ask, you know, what, you know, what are some of the complaints? We hear anecdotal complaints, because to me, it is a little bit about data collection to understand how a use is being kind of, is hurting communities, is actually creating a very, a very horrible situation for residents, and we're hearing about them. And I appreciate everyone who came out and have been speaking out about situations that have really made it difficult for them to, to, to live in their homes, and we don't want that, which is why I go to the fact that I, I hope we could come to some type of a, a balance and some type of agreement here, because I think the licensing, state registration, which many of them are not registered with the state, once we could put in something in place that could create some type of ways to mitigate the problems and really actually reporting them to the right places so that those, those entities would have their licenses taken away, I feel like we could really move forward progressively. I will go back to answer the questions, why am I looking and supporting short-term rentals? I mean, I think that's the biggest question we're all asking ourselves. You know, we've, right now, without the amnesty, we have really eliminated investor-owned properties. So no one, without the amnesty, can have an investment. And I want that clear. There is no investment right now available without the amnesty, right? So what passed without the amnesty, anyone who is thinking or maybe has an investment property cannot do that. If you are owning a, a property and you want to maybe one day split time in another community, but that's your primary residence, but you want to offer it, you could do that with the home share, but for those who are looking for maybe having another home or something, you can't have investments. And that's what we have, and I want to assure people that that's in place. The amnesty part is capped. And now the question is, why do this? Why am I supporting capping this small 31, whatever number, 31 to 41? Why am I supporting that? Well, because I talk to the people, I have the database, I have names. And it's, yes, I have names of people, and I could see how many are Newburyport residents. And some of them had already emailed, and some had reached out. And I spent time on the phone to try to understand what was this, what was this for them? And for many people, this is an added income, this is their livelihood, this is what they invested in. It wasn't that they were illegally doing it. Our zoning was agnostic on it. I think we need to recognize that. We have zoned for uses, and actually, there are uses in, that are happening right now that are not in our table of uses. Does that mean they're illegal? I think I learned that. I, I was initially saying illegal, but it's not. It's agnostic. And maybe Attorney Eichmann can answer that if you want, but, but I won't make you do that. But there, there's certain things which we need to recognize, that people who have moved forward and put money in and rely on it on income, I didn't think it was worth penalizing. And people could agree or disagree with me on that, but what helped and solidified it was going to Airbnb's website, talking to Marshall Murray about complaints, and trust me, there's complaints from people who are not short-term renters. It's actually people who, other, you know, neighbors, and I think we all know it in our neighborhoods, we live very tightly in the South End, there's always issues happening, and they're not always renters, but it's just part of the neighborhood, right? But I tried to find out what was specific to renters, and I actually could think of three anecdotal stories that we have heard, you know, with bachelor parties, with, with crazy noise all night long. We have ordinances that can actually protect neighbors from that, not just renters, but just even rowdy neighbors or whatever you want to call it. We have ordinances that protect the people. With short-term rentals, we even have a better power, we have a tool, we take away the license, and then we have a mechanism to find them. So we actually have more control with these short-term rental units. So I will be supporting this amnesty provision, and I hope we could reach some level of a compromise so that we could now start really giving people assurance that this will be a regulated and accepted use for our city. Thank you.
Counselor Wright?
Thank you. I'll be supporting the amnesty proposal. I've been a big, big advocate for it for two reasons, well, a few. One, it brings them into the system. The whole crux of this ordinance is not in this ordinance. The crux is in the licensing process and in the enforcement. If we don't do a good job in licensing and we don't do a good job in enforcement, then this ordinance means nothing. So for those people who in good faith registered with the state as investors, we've had no trouble accepting their money for the last three years. We don't know if they're good or bad. We don't know if, if the resident STRUs are good or bad. All we have is anecdotal stories. I, I appreciate everybody's personal stories. I'll answer the question, would you have a short-term rental unit with a non-owner-occupied person living next door to you? And my answer is yes. They've been perfect. We've had no issues, and I've lived there for six years. So there's two extremes for everything that we're talking about here. So the people, the people that register with the state in good faith and, and haven't done anything wrong should not be penalized by this. As other people have pointed out, and in our own ordinance, the condo question is addressed. People are saying under, under penalties of perjury that they've, that their, that their unit complies with all of the local regulations, including condo docs. So that's covered. The hysteria around investors suddenly coming to Newburyport now and buying up all of our property is, is a non-issue, because no one can do it, the, the date's already been set. So what we're really looking at is continuing to allow people that have operated in good faith, have registered with the state, to continue that use, and it's going to be a limited number of people. And the big, the big question and the big answer to everybody's concerns, which are legitimate, is in the enforcement. If we don't get to an ordinance that we can enforce, then, then we're, we're right back where we started.
Counselor Vogel?
Thank you, Counsel President. As a follow-on to the two previous counselors, I couldn't agree more. I think that I too have gone in at the urging of some of my fellow counselors to go in and read the reviews, and also of the, of the rentals that we have available here. And also, what's really interesting is to read the offering by the, the renters, how they, how they position their property, what they say about how to, how to behave there or how to be. There is, these people take this very seriously and very respectful of the people that are coming. As I say, I agree with the, the two counselors at large. I want to add a little bit about the economics of it. As a business owner, I can't tell you how dependent I am on the tourist rate. And for the 30 years that I have lived in this community, we have done everything we can to, other than embrace the fact that we are a can to, other than embrace the fact that we are a destination city. I would love to take that on as a project to, to figure out how we define ourselves. We seem to be sort of opposed to it, but yet we certainly welcome them. But as a business owner, I can't tell you anymore how dependent I am on the tourists that comes through this community for sort of the middle six months of the year, if you will. And I know other retailers as well. I, I talk to retailers all the time. So those people come in, I talk to them all the time. Where are you staying? Oh, well, we have this short-term rental. Where are you staying? Well, we have the short-term rental. Some of them stay at the end, some of them stay out of town. But they use our short-term rentals. It is an economic engine. So I stand firmly for the amendment, and I stand firmly against the order without the amendment. I do have a question, if I may. It was asked by the Ward 1 counselor about the structural deficiencies that would be a legal risk in this order. Can you possibly address that for us, Counselor? Thank you, Counsel President.
To the Counsel Vogel. This is, I think, the question I was asked last time as well. I put my concerns in writing to the council. My concern is that a matter of uniformity, that property in various districts has to be treated equally. There will be an argument, at least, that amnesty would allow for different treatment of properties in districts. That existing uses would be allowed while new uses would not be in some instances. That would be my concern. Again, this is, in my experience, this is an unusual zoning ordinance to provide amnesty like this. I cannot say that it would be unlawful, but I can't say it would not be subject to challenge.
Thank you, Attorney Eichmann. Further questions or comments? Counsel Wallace.
Thank you, President Shand. I do not support amnesty at all. It's a deal-breaker for me, so if it goes through, then I, I can't support the, the full ordinance. I'm a Ward counselor. I side with the residents. I believe their stories, I believe that there are even more people that aren't coming forward with their stories, or they don't report them to the zoning officer. And I would have preferred the December version, the special permit, parking restrictions. But I think this May version is the compromise, and I'm willing to live with that. But what I'm not willing to live with is a compromise on amnesty. I, you know, I, you know, when Airbnb started, I remember it was, oh, you can rent out a room in your house when you're not there. And now it's grown into this big industry. I'm sure that, you know, whoever created these, like, saw, saw where this was going. But it's, it's, it's at the point where it's not just residences, you know, owning a spot. It's these investment companies that come in, buy up these properties, or have bought up these properties, and so, and then they sell them to the residents, and these management companies are making money off of this as well. So, you know, there's a lot of people that are making money, and there's a lot of people that maybe have homes that aren't worth as much, but they want to have a nice, quiet, safe neighborhood and have that, that right. Not that, not that Airbnbs aren't safe, but if you don't feel comfortable in your home, your quality of life isn't good, and what would make you want to stay in Newburyport? So to me, the residents' concerns outweigh the investment property concerns. It's not perfect, but I think this May version is a compromise I'm willing to live with. And there's options. You know, people can still rent out long-term, they can do 32 days, they, they could sell, the market is good right now. The council can come back and loosen the, the regulations later. Because once we do this amnesty, it's done. I mean, you can't go back. So, so that's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Blaine.
I go back and forth on this a lot. I mean, I, I could see both sides, and this is, this is incredibly tough to decide. I don't want this piece to make the entire underlying resolution fail. We need this. Because we need to address the problems that are occurring in those neighborhoods where this is going on. It's not going to stop. This gives us the teeth to enforce that. I feel bad for the residents, I feel bad for the investors that have done no wrong in this. I just don't know where to go, and I, I guess if this, I'm, I'm for the, the exception, but I just don't understand why we can't come to some middle ground and figure out a way to incorporate those who haven't done anything wrong, and those residents who have the concerns. I don't understand why it's my way or the highway in this. There's got to be a way that we can do through licensing, something for the, the folks that have no problems to date in, in running their business. You know, I, it's tough. It's really tough to, to judge on this one. This one's really a tough one. But I, I feel like we have a history of analysis paralysis on things, and we, we shoot ourselves in the foot over minutia when we could meet in the middle and really come up with something otherwise that, that would work in, in terms of not burdening those who have good businesses or have good Airbnbs. Not every single one of them is, is a blight to the community. And the residents shouldn't have to feel like they're uncomfortable either. So I guess I'm asking, why can't we just figure this out to meet in the middle and, really take into consideration those who have done okay by the city and done okay by their, their neighbors, and those that haven't? When we come to the licensing portion of this, why can't we just say, hey, your neighbor says you're awful? And no, sorry, you can't operate. But there's those that, that you can step up and the neighbors can say, I've had no problem. And, and give them the permit. I don't, I just don't understand why we're, we're, this is such an impasse. Because this is, if this fails, the underlying fails, and you're going to have this problem into perpetuity. So I guess I'm asking for a little bit of convergence here and, and meeting of the minds and figuring out a solution that works.
So I saw Counsel Zede's hand. All right, so Counsel McCauley, and then Counsel Preston.
Thank you, Counsel President. So I appreciate everyone's perspectives on this. Couple of things I'd just like to clarify. We're not going after investor units. If the, if the May second version passes, there will be investor units in the city that will be allowed. They'll be allowed on the Plum Island Overlay District. They won't be allowed in the mainland where we're talking about right now. And we talk about things, when we talk about, when we, when we talk about investors and we say, well, they haven't done anything wrong. Okay, they haven't done anything wrong. It's not allowed in our zoning. We'll, we're going to update our zoning to either make them allowed or not allowed. But the underlying, the underlying issue here is that this is a business. This is a business in a residential area. So if this were, you know, a donut shop that wanted to open up, we would have zoning restrictions, not just licensing and health restrictions. We would have zoning restrictions about what they could do and what they couldn't do. Parking requirements that would have hours of operations, things like that. What we blend here, and this is part of the reason why we probably can't meet in the middle so much as we have to make a decision on this, is the fact that we have a business running right next door to a resident. And that's our business, is zoning, right? So we have to pick the areas that we want to have a business in. We don't let anyone who wants to run a, a true B&amp;B or a hotel go into residential areas. They can only be in the business section. So initial, one of the initial thoughts was that Airbnbs could only be in the business section, and they couldn't be in residence at all. But that's counter where the market is going. So the ordinance in May, what it does is it allows short-term rentals on a limited basis. Again, investors are not going to be shut out, they'll be concentrated in Plum, Plum Island Overlay District. And what they will, and what will happen now is the residents will now have a say in what goes on next door. And when we also throw out licensing and enforcement, our licensing board, by our own ordinance that we wrote, is administrative. They don't have the authority that a ZBA has. They can't make those decisions whether you're a good neighbor or you're not a good neighbor. If you check off the four boxes in zoning, you get a license. Unless there's a complaint, unless there's enforcement issues, unless there's other types of things along the way. So we, we can't pass the buck from making rules in zoning to saying, well, licensing will fix it. But it, because it won't. That's why we don't have a companion licensing amendment, because we need to set the rules right now. And if we set the rules, then, you know, by Tuesday, Wednesday, there'll be a licensing that will mirror what goes on here. So again, I, I, when we talk about this amnesty, we're talking about people, for the most part, the majority, 99.9% of them, don't live here. And I, and I really have a problem trying to confer any rights to people who don't live here. So, thank you.
Yes, so I wanted to address the questions from my fellow counselor from Ward 6. So this is exactly my attempt at meeting that compromise. This is my attempt at allowing for those units, 50% of which are Newburyport residents that own these investor units. This is my attempt at keeping those units that, that are operating completely reasonably within the city, that don't have any neighbor complaints. And to allow for those units, which we need for our downtown businesses, to continue to operate. But also, within this, we have the licensure, which absolutely gives the opportunity to eliminate those nuisance properties. It absolutely gives the opportunity for abutters and people to come and complain if there truly are issues. It absolutely gives the opportunity to take into account, should there be nuisance calls to the police. And it gives us the opportunity to take away their licenses. So it also incentivizes those units that we would offer amnesty to, to stay in good standing, so that they don't get eliminated. But this is exactly that attempt at finding that compromise, finding somewhere where we can get something passed. Because I passionately want to see us have regulations. And, you know, we, we all can count, we were here two weeks ago. It's not going to pass without the amnesty amendment. So we need to find somewhere that's compromised, and this is my attempt at compromise. I yield.
Counsel Combs, then Counsel Zede.
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I just want to just kind of, I guess, react to some of the statements more in, in response to the licensing piece. And I think that's an important piece. You know, we're given examples of, you know, a donut shop, or, you know, I, I appreciate that. You know, this is a different, you know, when you have residents, I, I think the main thing is, the house is being used as a residence, and the business is a place where people are staying. So the license piece is unique in this regard, a little bit different, because it's not like you're just going to have a short-term rental unit just operate. They have to be licensed with the city, and I know I've said this before, and I think we all understand that. But that piece is not written, but there were draft versions of it. And draft versions of it, and I, I think some of you guys remember, when we looked at it two years ago, it's quite a, a big list, and I think it's currently in license and permits. There is a lot of things that one has to produce to be able to run a short-term rental. This piece, once we get the zoning of it done, there is that, that teeth. And what we're saying for the license, there is a lot that can be put in there. In fact, the other thing is we could cap the number. That is totally allowed in licenses, like we do for alcohol, is that you could cap the number. And so I don't think people are really understanding, and that, or maybe they are, my apologies, I don't mean to say no one's understanding it. I think for me, maybe that's how I should speak about it, is for me, what gives me assurance, I guess that's it. Because I do live right next to short-term rentals, as well as long-term rentals, and we are not bothered by it. But I think the assurance that folks would probably like to know is that there is going to be this annual process that they go before the Licensing Commission. Now, I encourage, you know, the Licensing, Licensing Commission meets monthly, and in fact, you know, if you listened to some of their meetings, they have their agendas posted, and they go through what we create in our ordinances as their checklist. Now, the last piece I do want to mention, and I think this is more anecdotal from my perspective, is who could come to our city? And I just want everyone to think a little bit about this. A lot of people cannot afford to live in Newburyport. And I'm just saying that. People can't even afford to rent in Newburyport, let alone buy a house in Newburyport. But I have, as I see next door, visitors, have talked to them. And some of them are coming from communities, and this is like a dream, to come to Newburyport and spend a few days, come for the weekend with their kids, and get to enjoy things that are in our city and offering. And I think it's really important for us, you know, I know we have a lot of love for our community, but it's a broader community. We, we are not just Newburyport, we're, we're bigger than this. And I think it's important, again, to just recognize that there is a need being met, and there's an opportunity to be a welcoming community to everybody. Thank you.
Counsel Zede.
Thank you. So my, my comments to just, you know, I didn't want to speak again, but just, I'm getting more and more nervous every minute that goes by. So I, I guess my, my question, I'm trying to inject some pragmatism, I guess, into the conversation. And so for me, again, I still think the conversation's very heavy on, you know, do we want to give some, some quarter to some who maybe were doing this during a great time, is zoning agnostic on it? As opposed to what is being put at risk with or without this amendment in terms of the ordinance, in terms of the community, and in terms of what it means for the process? And I just think that's being lost. I think that people keep saying investor, but it's actually resident, non-resident is the, it's not investor. So that, to me, what, what's interesting about the conversation is, everybody seems to, the ship has sailed on non-resident, on the underlying. It's already done. That, that seems to not be a point of contention. We're just really hung up on this 20 to 50 units, depending on which number you want to take, et cetera. But that nobody is standing up and saying, I want this, but I also want to amend the underlying to allow for non-residents. So in some ways, that policy question has been closed. So by putting this in, we're talking about a relatively small number of units, which interestingly has been argued on both sides. One is that it's a small number of units, so who cares? And on the other hand, it's a small number of units, we should care tremendously. So it's, it's cutting both ways. But to pass this, and again, in my opinion, and with respect to Attorney Eichmann's points, I mean, you're, you're injecting risk, in my opinion, and not great reward. That's number one. Number two is what, you know, in terms of finding the balance, I think the Ward 4 counselor made some decent points about, you know, one could argue December is over here, right? And then making edits is over here, and what's in the middle is May. I mean, there, there's a lot of common sense to that kind of theory. And I actually have had comments, discussions with some residents who are pushing hard for December 21 version, and I said, have you thought about, you know, May still gives you some of those protections? Yes, there, there have been some, some softening in some of the areas. But that on pace, you're getting really that non-resident is, is eliminated, and that, that may be the biggest thing. The last thing I want to say is, it's interesting being on for so long, and Counsel Cameron mentioned, you know, 2017, but the licensing comes in and out of focus. But one thing we learned about, and this became material with the removal of the special permit, is the Licensing Commission has to act much more ministerially. They have to basically process applications and look primarily or more for completeness than acting as a special permit where they have a standard that's like not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, which really is figure it out, right? Figure out where the neighborhood is and try and come up with something that's not. So I'm not sure the licensure will provide as much as people think, where they can just sort of arbitrarily or capriciously say, yep, no, no license for you, that sort of thing. I think it's going to be a lot more tight and narrow than that. So I, I really want to rest on this. You know, this isn't the one, you're, you're killing a compromise, you know, by going for this, and that, and that's the risk you're, you're putting in. I'd rather go to my residents tomorrow and explain to them that I voted for May, and I was kind of in the middle of the road on this, and that's, that's what I'm hoping to do, but this is, this is going to be a challenge for many. So I hope, I hope it will get rejected and we can move on to the underlying.
So I believe, so last, last person, Counsel Wallace.
This is a question for Attorney Eichmann. And maybe it was discussed two weeks ago, and I apologize, I wasn't here, but can you explain why these properties are not called grandfathered, but it's amnesty? And then your, your comment about, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this is something rare? Or can you, do you see this often, whether it's with short-term rentals or with other types of uses? And what does amnesty mean, I guess?
Grandfathering is a concept in zoning, and we're not supposed to use the word anymore, just so everybody's clear. A concept that a use that starts as just so everybody's clear, a concept that a use that starts as a legal use becomes unlawful when the zoning bylaw or ordinance changes. So it has to be established as a lawful use, and then a change in the law makes it unlawful. Those uses, as long as they continue without change, or without change as authorized, remain protected, that there's a state statute that provides for that. That's a so-called grandfathered use. In this case, my understanding is that this ordinance was drafted based on the understanding that the Newburyport zoning ordinances does not allow the commercial use that we understand to be short-term rental units, does not allow it now. So those existing uses, under that understanding, would not be treated as legal uses that would be protected if the zoning bylaw changes, they would now be unlawful, and it would continue to be unlawful unless they were allowed under this new ordinance. So that's why we use the word, as I understand it, amnesty. We are addressing those units specifically and saying, it's not that you were previously legal, but we are giving you this specific protection under this new ordinance.
Thank you.
I think we've gotten, all right, this is the one last, this is it, one last time, councillor Cameron.
So, yeah, just, and I know I spoke at mine from the beginning, and I kind of jumped the gun there a little bit, to use that metaphor. Yeah, just, you know, my focus here is on residents, it's not on investors who may own several properties, it's on people who may be lucky to have one and afford a rental in Newburyport. I mean, to me, this is a housing argument, I know it's been said by several people, this has nothing to do with housing, or affordable housing, or rentals, and I say it does. I say investors, if they're not allowed to do this, they can rent them out long-term, they can rent them for more than 32 days, which many people already do, and this doesn't, you know, I don't think this harms anybody, I think it makes it more likely that these will be rented out. Yes, it's not going to drop the price of rentals in Newburyport by a significant margin, but it does provide, you know, more rental vacancies, and we're desperate for those. We've lost hundreds in the last couple of decades.
Last one, this is it.
Well, I just want to talk a little bit, just sort of about the numbers, just to kind of talk, know what we're talking about, so, as a sort of the NMA. On Palm Island, there were 60, on Ward 1, there were 16, in Ward 2, there were 29, in Ward 3, there were 23, in Ward 4, there were 9, and in Ward 5, there was 1, and in Ward 6, there was 1. That's the number that are registered. You may see more over the different platforms, it may, that number may look different, but those are the numbers that were registered. And as the councillor at large suggested, that the big numbers, that Wards 2, or 1, 2, and 3, roughly half are, quote, these investors. And then that number will break down further. But here's the deal, short-term rentals are vital. If you are wanting to move into Newburyport, or if you're wanting to move out of Newburyport, or you want to move out, you've sold your house, and you need to live somewhere else for the time being while you're looking for another one, short-term rentals play a vital role in that. Short-term rentals play a vital role when your family comes to visit. Short-term rentals play a vital role when you have any type of gathering with your family at the holidays. These are vital components to our community, and they're vital components to the economics of the businesses in our community as well. Again, we're, the difficulty that I have not accepting, or with the underlying, and not allowing the amnesty, is that we are just really confining it, and I don't think that we need to. Armageddon is not going to happen, and if you read about short-term rentals across the country, communities that have embraced short-term rentals, actually, property values increase, they go up, there is not Armageddon. Short-term rentals do not bring, you know, gangs and thieves to our neighborhoods. And again, back to the licensing, there is a solution, there is enforcement opportunities. Thank you, I yield.
All right, the vote. Roll call.
Okay, this is a roll call.
All right, hang on, so councillor Donahue.
Point of order before we continue.
Can we just remind the crowd to keep it down, so that we can focus on what we're saying to each other?
Yes, so, thank you.
So I can, Mr. Roll Call, a motion to amend by adding paragraph 8 with the amended language from September 9, that is included on your desk, that we had written into the record by councillor Preston. It's amendment needs six, the underlying motion approved needs eight. So having said that, councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
No.
Councillor Cameron?
No.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
No.
Councillor McCauley?
No.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
No.
Councillor Shan?
No.
Motion fails. Receiving five yeses, needing six, motion fails. Underlying motion is on the floor.
Councillor McCauley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend section 9, where it says the provisions in VG will take effect December 1, 2022, and for the purposes of permitting and all other provisions, fully enforceable beginning, I'd rather, I'd like to say June 1, 2023.
Second. Motion move the question?
The reason for that is, I think, without an amnesty provision, we want to give time for those investors to plan their strategy going forward. Thank you.
Councillor, just for clarification, so you're changing one date, which was January, then became April, it's now going to June?
Yes.
I'll second his motion as well.
Move the question?
Second.
All right.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend on the floor, now there's a motion to call the question. That requires two thirds. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you.
Point of order, just calling the question on the date, on the date?
Yeah, the only motion on the floor was that motion to amend, I assume that's what you're doing. Let me just catch up.
The point of order, that's not two thirds, right? So we need six. You said two thirds, but we're doing the amendment, correct?
A motion.
Question is two thirds.
Oh, so we're moving the entire, okay.
No, just the date.
Didn't you say two thirds?
Moving the motion to amend to change the date.
Thank you.
We're forcing a vote that requires two thirds.
Oh, got it, got it, thank you.
So again, this is a vote on a motion to move the question. Ready?
Yes.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have the motion to amend by changing the date to June 1, 2023. Roll call?
Roll call.
Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
And councillor Shan?
Yes.
Okay, so we now have a motion to approve on the floor with the amendments from last week, and the motion as amended for paragraph 9.
Councillor Zede, then councillor Cameron.
So I just want to rise in support of this, I said, sort of hinted at this in my earlier comments, but now's the time to bring this home, in my opinion, and, you know, it's a hard-fought thing, and I understand that some may not be happy, or some may be happy. I'm not personally jumping for joy on anything, but I really do believe that the May 2022, which is effectively what we have now, with some minor, relatively minor changes, is now, is the middle of the road, and so I get to flip the hat and talk about the other side, which is, if you want to do some short-term rentals, you get to do them. And we have, as I mentioned, the non-resident resident debate was really at the heart of all of this. Before amnesty was the thing, it was resident versus non-resident, and that seemed to get settled out even a couple of years ago, honestly, it started to become more clear, and it wasn't always. I mean, honestly, when this first came out in 1617, there was, to one councillor's point, there were more comments in favor of just, you know, okay, anybody can do this, but I think as the conversation flowed, it seemed that folks who, folks seemed to coalesce around the idea that resident-driven, or resident-run STRUs had a better propensity to be run better, simply because of that nexus to the neighborhood. So you have now three categories. We had a speaker in public comment who happens to live in my ward, and I believe, based on my understanding of situation, would be considered either an owner-adjacent or a limited, you know, it's basically doing something within your own house, it is your residence, no one's looking to take that away. Yes, there will be some casualties in this, that we're on that sort of fringe of the investor and so forth, but by and large, there will be short-term rentals in the city. There will need to be people who have a connection to the community, and are not from across the coast, or something like that, and hopefully, we find that that will give us some balance. And I will say that I'm too, I'm very interested in the licensure and all of that kind of stuff. With that being said, as a seven-year now ward councillor, I will tell you that enforcement can't be everywhere all the time, so you have to build things that structurally are designed to basically encourage, or in some cases, force good behavior, because getting that response constantly is very difficult, whether you're talking about speeding on Water Street, or you're talking about other concerns, or nuisances, or noise, or things like that. So, you know, yes, that will be a component of it, and I hope that that will come through, license and permits, I'm confident that it will. But on balance, I think we're here, and for residents who feel that the December version was the stronger version, I hear you on that, you know, there's the argument to be made for the special permit, but I think this is it, and I sincerely hope that we don't let this die now, tonight, and I ask for everybody to consider supporting it.
Councillor Cameron?
Yeah, I just simply wanted to thank you, President. I think a Scribner's element of confusion on page 9, so on page 9, under home share rental units, I think it should, it says 90, parentheses, 120 days, I think it should say 100, should read 120, and then parentheses, 120, home share rental units, number 2.
Yeah. Second, if it needs.
I think it's just a correction. We did change it, I think that was, councillor Khan had mentioned that going from 90 days to 120, and I think it just wasn't.
The word 90 should be 120.
Should be added.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct. And that should just, 120 should be written out in addition to the number there.
We're ready for a roll call, this is on the underlying motion to approve with the amendments. Councillor Wright?
No.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
No.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
No.
Councillor Vogel?
I'm a no.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Seven positive votes, needing eight, motion fails. So we have a second reading of ordinance 122, that's the fire station proposed zoning amendment.
Motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
Councillor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Committee items. We don't have anything on developments, as far as the ad hoc on Market Landing Park, I can tell you that the planning board is meeting on the DOD special permit for the park. It is going to be occurring on the 21st, I believe. So if you all are interested in hearing that one, they are discussing it. Next is budget of finance, councillor Zede.
Thank you. Motion to approve of question 337, Julie Landjaran, 13 Cushing to treasurer, collecting 9125.
Second.
Thank you. So the committee met on September 1, and we had, Julie came and visited us, we had a nice conversation. She has been with the city for 13 years, and worked here first as an assistant treasurer, and before that as an assistant treasurer in Bauxford, before ascending to the treasurer position, really enjoys the work, and we did talk a little bit about some of the department happenings. This is the money collection aspect, so Ethan's ones who have the money, but this is how the money comes in the door, and the collection rate remains steady at around 98%. There's a good amount of pride, I think, in that number, and Julie mentioned they've been able to maintain that for about 10 years. And she also mentioned that, you know, despite that high collection rate, they really do try and work with residents. I mean, there are situations that occur where somebody's having a chance to pay a bill and so forth, and they do as much as they can within the confines to keep them out of tax title and so forth, before they have to go down that road. In terms of looking forward, the department is currently trying to hire a clerk, they just, it's a position they have in the budget, but have been unable to fill it, so if you know somebody who's interested. They do a lot of work in tandem with the finance department. We also talked about the move from payroll, moving out of the finance department a few years ago, for those of us on the council may recall that, and the report was generally that it's been a favorable move, that was done for accounting control purposes, so that's been good. We talked about some of the challenges, and one thing that was brought up was just continuing to try and smooth out coordination with the schools, just because the schools are so big, and obviously a substantial part of the budget. The last thing that we discussed was, you know, the city's holdings, which is also part of the treasurer's position, is to manage the cash, basically, we have on hand, which comes in a variety of form, stabilization funds, et cetera, to the tune of millions of dollars. Also, the trust funds that we talked about, such as the Herman Roy Trust Fund, for example. So she did mention that the trust fund commission is sort of up and running in a way that it hasn't been in years past, but they're meeting regularly, and they were meeting with Bartholomew, which is our financial advisor, essentially investment advisor. I forwarded you the report that she provided to me, just for your edification, and then, and they've been, you know, earning about 3% to 4% typically, and unfortunately, the inflation has not given us quite the benefit on that end, as we have seen as pain on the cost end. And then finally, we did have a conversation about credit card processing, just because this comes up perennially with different, and we asked the question, you know, do you ever think that we could consolidate all city collection from credit cards to one processor? And the answer was, we think we can make improvements, steady improvements, but probably not, and that's because different departments are generally looking for software that fits their needs first, and then oftentimes, those come with a card processor. So there definitely could be some consolidation, but doing 100% consolidation would probably be fairly difficult. The committee then voted 2 to nothing, and to recommend her appointment, and I bring that to you tonight.
For the discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the appointment of Julie Landjaran. Councillor Wright?
Yes.
Councillor Zede?
Yes.
Councillor Cameron?
Yes.
Councillor Donahue?
Yes.
Councillor Khan?
Yes.
Councillor Lane?
Yes.
Councillor McCauley?
Yes.
Councillor Preston?
Yes.
Councillor Vogel?
Yes.
Councillor Wallace?
Yes.
And councillor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it for business coming out tonight, I just wanted to update everybody. Committee will be meeting on Wednesday of this week, instead of Thursday. Apologies. It's a scheduling conflict on my end, so I take responsibility, but we will meet at 6:30. Probably the most, the biggest thing people might be interested in would be the Bartlett-Mal Committee of the whole, so that will be discussed. We will have the Parks Commissioner liaison to Bartlett. Mr. Chuck Griffin will be doing a quick presentation. The special projects manager will be available as well. And then the other two things we're planning to take up substantively would be the building inspector, new enforcement fines that came in a little while ago, and the amendment to municipal fees. And then we had a couple new things come in tonight as well, nothing major, but that'll be Wednesday at 6:30. And then finally, I just want to kind of give you the horizon here. The next big thing for budget will be the setting of the tax rate, so we were going to be getting ready for that roughly in November. That's also the time when free cash will unfreeze, so just to give everybody a heads-up, that we will likely take those up sometime in late October, November, and with a recommendation from the administration typically on that rate. So that's it for budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Z. Education, Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. Education committee, we've kind of taken a hiatus, but school committees kind of back, they've been meeting, I think, early September, so next week on Monday, we're going to try to go back to meeting the hour before the school committee's meeting. I think just logistically, trying to make things work, there's a lot of things happening with committees on Tuesdays, and I think that's been kind of stretching everyone thin. So on the 19th, and I will be sending an email out to my committee members. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, just to let everyone know, we do have a meeting next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, so it's on the calendar for the Paper Streets, and the administration will have hopefully something back from KP Law regarding the process that we had put together and discussed at our last meeting, so more to come there. License and permits.
Go ahead. We have nothing planned at this time. I was hoping to clean up that tonight, but we'll wait.
Got it. So Neighborhood and City, thank you, Counselor Lane, Neighborhood and City Services.
Yes. Motion to approve Order 378, crosswalk at Kent and Washington Street.
Second.
All right, we had, this is sponsored by Ward 3 President Shan, and we held our NCS meeting on-site last week, and we had a great turnout of probably 15 or so residents. This is to put a crosswalk in, across Kent Street near Washington, where there's currently not one. It's a major route to downtown from some of the apartment complexes, I forget what they're called.
53 Ward Street condos.
The one.
Warren Street condos.
Warren Street condos, yeah, so there's, yeah, like 100-plus residents that live there, so they use this. Kent Street is a major cut-through, it's a very wide street, so it also has a lot of traffic, fast traffic, so they're looking for increased visibility and safety, and then perhaps some traffic calming down the road. We also discussed the need for a crosswalk adjacent to it, across Washington Street, so I'll make an amendment on that shortly after we have some discussion. But we approved this 3-0 in committee, and also want to mention that they have started a work out there. So perhaps Counselor Shan, or whoever, will have to coordinate with the administration to make sure that it matches what we have. It's not complete, but they did start digging it up to put in some new ramps, so that I will yield. Thank you.
Counselor Wright?
Just a question, is that going to be on the High Street side of Kent Street and Washington, or the Merrimack side of Kent and Washington?
It says the, it's the Merrimack side.
Okay, thank you. So it's on the parks, it's on the park side, or the?
Yeah, they call it the north side.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So I'd like to make an amendment to add, I lost my spot. In addition to that crosswalk, to add the language, add a crosswalk on Washington Street to Kent Street.
Second. I'm going to be saying thank you.
Oh, thank you.
All right. So, all right, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of adding the extra crosswalk across Washington Street at Kent Street, say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, underlying motion, all those in favor of Order 378, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. What else is out of Neighborhood and City Services?
Next week, as the mayor had pointed out, we will be having the meeting to discuss the Parks Reorganization Plan, so I will be getting information out, but the meeting is scheduled for 5, maybe 5, 6. We may have to do some other business at 5, so it may be around 6, but I'll get that out, and other than that, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cameron, Planning and Development?
Motion to approve Order 381, Eileen Graff appointed as special municipal employee.
Second.
Thank you. So Planning and Development Committee met this evening, it was Counselor Wallace and myself. Counselor Preston was not able to be there, and we did vote in favor of this, 2 to 0. Director Port is here to yet again explain the special municipal employee, because I won't do it justice if people need to hear it. So Eileen Graff, as people probably know, is a local architect. She was recently appointed to be on the Fruit Street Historic District Commission. Bonnie Sontag, who was the planning board representative to that commission, was also in our meeting and spoke very highly of Eileen's participation, and so similar to the recent one that we did, she, Eileen Graff, frequently represents homeowners before boards, typically ZBA, I think Planning Board also on occasion. So there are times when she's representing a client in front of the city, and so this special municipal employee piece is really like a disclosure, just so it's known that she's, you know, has this role on the Fruit Street Historic District Commission while she's representing, you know, clients in front of boards. She did say, if there's 19 residences in that district, she would not represent any one of those, that would clearly be a conflict, so, and we're also, we also suggested that she file a disclosure form with the clerk, it's kind of a felt and suspenders additional disclosure. So we did approve that, you know, vote to recommend it to your approval, 2 to 0. We did also add an amendment that we would change the effective date, which, if you have it open in your packet, is effective October 1st. Director Port had put that date in because he wasn't sure when it would be coming before the full council, and obviously, we're in the first meeting of September, so I think October 1st was not a bad guess, but there, she is, I don't know what the matter is, but she is going to be appearing before board, I think she said, on September 27th, so she asked if that date could be changed, either to this date, assuming we approve it, or effective upon, you know, council approval, some language like that. I don't know if Counselor Wallace wants to add anything, but that's my report.
Counselor Wright?
So I think we're going overboard with this designation. It says that there are a special municipal employee, which assumes remuneration. In the previous one that we approved, that person was being paid by the city to do city work, and then wanted to continue to do work for himself. I understand that. I don't think it applies in this instance, where somebody who's serving pro bono on a commission without getting paid, needs to have this special designation. It doesn't make sense to me.
Counselor Z.
Yeah, I too am going to oppose this, maybe for a slightly different reason. I guess for me, the concern is that, you know, the makeup of this Fruit Street Historic Board, for example, has some people that sit on other land use boards, and I feel like tacitly, I'm implying that that's okay, and that's not, it shouldn't be okay, because it's odd to serve with some people, and then also, a separate two weeks later, appear before them, let's say. Just that relationship seems a little bit awkward to me, and so, I mean, it's a tough one, because you don't want to say, you know, thanks but no thanks for being willing to serve on a commission, but at the same time, if you're going to do that sort of business in the city, I think that's kind of tough to separate, especially on these types of things. So not representing those 19 homes or so in that district, yes, that helps, but at the same time, it's just a little bit too tenuous for me, and I honestly, if I'm being honest, sort of regretted my vote a couple weeks ago, so I can only do what I can do going forward, and for me, that means opposing at this time. Thank you.
Counselor Z. Further comments, discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the appointment of Eileen Graff as a special municipal employee. Counselor Wright?
No.
Counselor Z.
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Needing six, receiving six, motion passes.
Okay, Counselor Cameron?
Motion to approve Appointment 335, William Mullin to Conservation Commission.
Second.
Thank you. So I think if you take a look at, you'll see his resume, so again, Counselor Wallace and myself voted 2 to 0 in favor. Mr. Mullin has extensive experience, and in fact, has worked for the Army Corps of Engineers. He is somewhat.
Not automatically disqualifying.
We anticipated comments, and he mentioned that as well. Both of these folks were, they were offered the opportunity to stay here all night if they wanted to, but we also said that we could probably answer any questions. So he has a lot of experience in wetlands permitting, flood modeling is his background. He saw the mayor was looking for members of boards and commissions, thought this would be a fit. He has been involved in the Resiliency Committee, I think since 2015 till 2020. You know, mentioned working with John Eric White, and although he did not know he would be persuasive with a certain ward counselor, he did say the phrase, "I love numbers," so we thought that was good. And again, he's worked with Joe Tashara, who's the chair, and Julia Gutfrudson from the Resiliency Committee, and yeah, we just, we thought he would be a great fit, you know, with his background, and that would be very helpful. There's been a little bit of churn on the Conservation Committee with, Commission with a few folks leaving, but we did vote to recommend it to you, 2 to 0.
Further discussion? Roll call.
Roll call on the appointment of Mullin to the Concom. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z.
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion to, somebody's going to have to help me here on this.
Motion to approve.
To approve.
Motion to approve Order 377.
Yep, second.
Thank you, Counsel President. Reason I'd like us to take this up and talk about it tonight, is the underlying order that's there, actually is, if passed, would ask the administration to provide us data, and that data would be on the gym, on potential offices, and potential housing, and it has different dates associated with those for ask. This information exists, most of it exists already in the Planning Office website, and it's a matter of really corralling and sifting through that information, and so it makes no decision as to what's going on at the Brown School itself, with the reconstituted Brown School ad hoc approving this tonight, would allow information to be funneled back that they, that that ad hoc could actually use on their shortened runway to providing a report in January. So, thank you. President, if I could, I have made copies, because the procedure that was used, they're not, it's not in the packet. If anyone would like me to pass these around, or no? No?
I'm good anyways.
I have a.
For anyone interested, I would just read, what, you know, so really what it is, it's asking for a ROM, a schematic and ROM pricing for the gym, a schematic and ROM pricing for municipal offices at 40% use of the building, and a schematic and ROM pricing for 60% for affordable housing in the building itself, and that should jumpstart, hopefully, jumpstart data sharing and information.
Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, just to say, as Chair of the Committee, Counselor McCauley had reached out to me earlier today, and gave me assurances that this is really, is, as the, you know, as the order is written, this is really information sharing. I, you know, again, I apologize to my colleagues for not getting the ad hoc going for various reasons, and I think, I think it can do a good job, and, you know, I hope that we can support the work of the ad hoc, but, you know, to me, I'd support this as long as it's not, you know, playing favorites with possible outcomes, but I think to have the information on a range of outcomes, I think that's okay. And again, we will be having, I'm sure, some serious discussions, arguments, contention about what actually will go there down the road, but that will be another time.
Further discussion? Counselor Khan?
Yeah, thank you, Counsel President. I mean, in theory, I definitely appreciate trying to capture information, but if I knew this was the process, you know, I think I could have probably also put something in, asking for things, and then bypassing a committee and forcing it for discussion, and I understand that we have the rule, I get it, you know, we have sometimes things that have been sitting in committee, and it's frustrating, and sometimes some have asked that it stay in committee, but I feel like on this side, I can't support this. I mean, I know we have an ad hoc, and I know there's going to be some efforts being made to start working with a clean slate. In fact, even just what was the communication, I got some messages from residents who were really like, what's going on? Has a decision already been made on anything? Where was the public process on that? So to me, this is the clean slate, is the ad hoc. We start, and we give, you know, we give full options of what could be possibilities, and drill down then to what would be those next steps, and where would be the additional types of research or studies that need to be done, but the way this is being done now, I don't think that's right. If we didn't have an ad hoc with already efforts, you know, I get it, something's been sitting in committee, it hasn't been discussed, and this is now the realm to discuss it, and to maybe amend it, you know, there could be other asks we could put in here, and if that's what we're going to do, and I don't know how the majority feels, but I just wanted to know right now, that I was looking forward to a Planning and Development Committee to look at this, and maybe look at more options of what needs to be looked at, but to approve this on the fly, when we know that something's going to be starting up, that could have, lead to additional work and additional kind of research, it makes more sense to just wait. So, you know, one thing we could do is, and I'm fully in favor of maybe sending it back to committee, so we're not losing sight of it, I don't want to kill it, but I do think that there's good information, and there could be added on with additional asks, and the level of work required from administration to do it. Thank you.
Counselor Khan? Counselor Wallace?
Sure, I fully support this. I think Counsel McCauley has put in a lot of work. I learned a lot, even just by reading this. I don't know why we would turn it away. I think more information is better, and I don't, I don't think it's like bad intent, I mean, I can't speak for him, but trying to like subvert some process, I think it's just making sure we have everything we need, and we can use it as a tool to check things off as we go, so I support this. Thank you.
Counselor Wright?
Yeah, I was happy to support the original request for information. I think it's pertinent. It's in no way prerogative, pejorative, it doesn't go in either direction, one way or another, it's just a starting point for conversation, and I think it would be welcomed in conjunction with the ad hoc committee, and I think it would be a helpful tool for them, so that's why I was happy to co-sponsor both the original request for information, and then also the request to bring it out of committee tonight.
Further discussion? Counselor Vogel, and then Counselor Donahue.
Thank you, Counsel President. I'm going to go ahead and rise in support of letting it come out. I'm a little bit hesitant, only because it's asking for some very specifics, but I don't, I guess I don't really see the harm in having that being gathered up and presented. It'll simply be a stack of, you know, working documents and working information that I think that the ad hoc committee can go forward with. I feel a little bit sorry for the work that has to be done to gather that, but let it happen, it'll jumpstart things, I believe. Thank you.
Counselor Donahue?
Thank you, President. I am admittedly a little uncomfortable. I had hoped, again, like the at-large counselor said, to actually have the opportunity to attend the committee meeting to discuss this, or at least hear more about it, and I do feel that the ad hoc should start with a clean slate, so I have to agree with the at-large counselor in that. I can appreciate the premise of gathering this information, I just am not comfortable with the order, and I'd like to see what the ad hoc is able to do with a clear view. Thank you.
Counsel Donahue? Further discussion or comments? Counselor Z.
Thank you. No, I'll support this, I guess, I mean, I've. I guess, I mean, I've struggled with the ad hoc, as folks know, and I continue to struggle with it, but the question here is, I guess, and we had this argument, I think, a couple, some months ago, but respectfully, I don't understand the clean slate argument. I mean, how, I'd like to see something happen to the Brown School in the next 12 months. Just to cut to the chase on what my goal is, something that's been on the docket for a very long time. Arguably, 1, 2, and 3 here are pretty much the universe of what we've been talking about now for some time. Maybe one might argue that the municipal use is a little bit different than what maybe has been talked about, but really, we've been circling around the same stuff forever. And we, you know, President Shan will recall the list of 800 potential outcomes. We've done so much of that work and it just, I'm just worried, and I said this the last time too, is we want to continue, not start over. So disinformation is sensible to ask for, it doesn't, I don't think it negates the ability to ask for more information by all means. I mean, the ad hoc or any other group or body or individual counselor might say, no, you know, not 60% or 40% or something like that, but, I mean, we just need something to get going, and I think, you know, we've just been stalled out for so long. So I'm just worried about, you know, having blue ocean thinking again, meaning we're gonna come into a committee and say, let's dream about what the Brown School can be, and then back to like, should we demolish the building? Should it be open space? Should we build a rocket ship there? You know, we've already had all those conversations. And again, I just, I don't think Counselor McCauley's out of bounds here, and Counselor Wright, the special, pardon me, the sponsors are out of bounds here with the request. This is pretty, you know, it's in the ballpark, so let's get the information if it helps us get going, and then we can take it from there.
Counselor Wallace and Counselor Donahue.
Yeah, I also just wanna say that what they're asking for makes complete sense. A schematic and a rough order magnitude cost, those are the things you really, really want in project development. So it's better to, if this is what some of the counselors want, it's better to get this information early and not go through the process down the road, you know, and spend, it's just, it's a better way to come up with some sort of compromises or at least understand where everybody's coming from. But you gotta have a schematic and a cost in any project. And I hope that's gonna be one of the outcomes from the ad hoc committee, but I think this kind of just puts it in writing a little more specifically.
Counselor Donahue. Counselor Wallace.
Thank you, President. I, I feel this is pretty relevant, and I do appreciate what's gone into it and the efforts behind it, but I'm not, I'm just not comfortable accepting it before I have the opportunity to be involved in what happens to the Brown School in my ward. And I have been pretty clear from day one that I am in favor of affordable senior housing, and I don't see how getting a cost estimate for 60% of affordable housing units in a building that would not ever have the ability for that few, it's a misnomer. We won't have affordable housing with a plan like this at all. So this needs to be hashed out in the ad hoc. I feel that's the appropriate place for it, or in the very least, in the committee it was sent to. So, and I'm just, I am admittedly feeling a little dismissed, and I just don't see that being necessary. I think everyone's opinion should count for what they're worth. Thank you.
Counselor, so, yeah, Counselor Lane hasn't spoken yet.
I just think, I mean, let's go down the path and take a look at what is underlying at the Brown School before we start jumping into what the process is going to be. There's a number of different things that can happen there. There could be a sale, it could be renovated. I think when you find out more of what the building consists of and what that costs to remediate and what it's going to entail to fix that, let's not get over our head, cart before the horse here. Let's just, this information's good. I mean, just use it in terms of the whole, the whole picture. So I think we're getting a little bit too into the weeds here with this, so I'll yield the tab.
Counselor Zee had his hands up, then Counselor Khan.
I just wanted to see if the sponsor would accept a friendly amendment in 1, 2, and 3, pushing each one of them by 30 days. So October 15th, November 15th, December 15th.
Sure.
Which I think is in line with the original intent of basically 30 days from the date it was introduced, just so it's actually has some basis in reality, because September 15th is in three days. So if that's friendly, I think that's.
Yes.
Okay.
Friendly to me.
Friendly.
So do we move all three, September 15th to November, October to November, and the other was November?
November to December. All of them move 30 days up. That way they're all consistent with where they are now.
All right, discussion on the amendment? Okay. So we can vote on the amendment?
I do wanna discuss. Yeah, thank you. I think timing is a little bit arbitrary, so it goes back to, so we're pushing them out, so September becomes October, October, November, November, December. So this is very arbitrary, we're kinda discussing this on the fly. There are certain things missing, you know, how much would it cost to demo the building? You know, we've heard all kinds of different options. We're killing it. We're really focusing, and let me read some of it, you guys. First of all, all who were asked this before, that's the history on the Brown School. For those of us who've been following it for so long, it's just regurgitated. It's nice, it's here, but it's in other places too. There's a Brown School adaptive, or a Brown School actually landing page on the city's website that talks a little bit about this history. I feel like we're circumventing, and to be honest, I, we formed an ad hoc, and yes, it didn't kick off. So I actually thought this was a very good order to kind of like, hey, you guys, let's keep, let's get this moving. So the excitement is, we have an order, a communication that kind of rephrase, maybe like realign like people and timelines. We have that. So the creative freedom now to take a look, because here it's very specific, how much is it for 40% to be municipal space? 40%. Well, where's that number coming from, you guys? Like, we're gonna go and do some tasks. This is not just gonna be, oh, someone could just really calculate it, there's like a little calculator and a churner, data churner, that will give it to you, you fit in the parameters. We are kind of wasting time when we could actually come up with additional items and look at them together with a holistic vision. It's how you would start anything, like anything where, and I'm telling you, the residents are, they deserve seeing transparency here. I have been asked, like, why are we going strictly with some options and not looking at it from creatively? Which is why I think a transparent process, and you throw everything on the wall and see what sticks. You throw everything on the wall, and then you create a matrix of financial implications. That's when then the research gets in to fill in the financial implications. I, I've heard people say, like, you know, what's happening? Are we keeping the gym, are we not? Why are we not just having it become a bigger playground or a garden? Like, people want to hear answers. And by already going down and chartering something here and now trying to move the dates to make it fit, we're really, I mean, I'm just asking, can we send this back to committee? I'm not saying dismiss it, but I think we could amend it, maybe as the committee is going on, the ad hoc, which we are hoping to start, maybe as we go along, bring in maybe what we're finding and put it in the order. Here are some additional asks. Then let's amend, let's have the committee discussion, and then bring it in and have administration, and people actually work to get this data. All I'm asking is, don't, don't use this because we're frustrated that the process hasn't stopped yet. All I'm asking is, give the process a chance.
Counselor McCauley?
Yeah, thanks. So, thank you, Council President. Most of my percentages and dates weren't arbitrary. So I did spend some time on the city's Brown School landing page. And what already exists is zoning that is for a gym, municipal space, and affordable housing, already exists today. So starting over would say the zoning doesn't exist and, you know, so we're kinda starting over on some things but not other things, right? So there's already an overlay zoning, the Brown School overlay zoning. There's already one or two RFPs for affordable housing, municipal space and gym space that are already on the website, right? Divvy up the building 30%, 40%, 60%. They're on there. There are options within the RFPs that were already written on that aspect of it. What I tried to coincide this with, the first one, with the, the information about the gym, is the administration, through the architect that we hired, is going, is ready to deliver their 8% evaluation on the gym and that space. And I had coordinated with the administration to have it done by the end of September to be able to do that. So it's not arbitrary in some of the things I'm asking for. I'm not asking for an RFP, I'm not asking for us to spend money, more money along the way. What I'm asking for is some of the money, some of the information we already have that's already been evaluated to be reconstituted in a different format. And I'm only asking for three options. I'm in no way involved in the ad hoc, and I in no way wanna be involved in the, in the ad hoc. But what I've asked for is the three basic options that are under zoning today. And if there are seven more options that the ad hoc wants to explore, fantastic, I think that's great, and I think that's a great transparent method. But they still have to look at these three, because these three are what's part of the underlying zoning. So again, it wasn't, as my co-sponsor, it wasn't a pejorative statement, it just was, how do we help jumpstart this? And I thought it was appropriate in our conversations to do it now in conjunction with the kickoff of a new ad hoc. So this information, I think, would be critical. Rule it out. If, for example, you know, 60% of affordable housing is $30 million, then guess what? That's probably not an option we can, we can pursue. That doesn't mean we have to start all the way over again, that means that's an option that has to get tabled until 30 million becomes 5 million, something that we can afford going forward. So, so that's the intent of this, it was nothing more than that. And I think that the information here is pretty basic that we're asking for, and is consistent with what's already out there as an overlay to the Brown Zone. Thank you.
Deal with the friendly amendment.
Yes.
So the friendly amendment was moved by Counselor Zee, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Want to do a voice vote on it?
Sure. All those in favor of the amendment, the friendly amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No? So now on the floor, is the motion approved with those three amendments?
I'm just gonna, if I may, so I'm just gonna try to come into the middle of this and just say that, I hear both sides. I hear the frustration of the two ad hoc committee members sort of being handed perhaps something that, you know, seems prerogative, and I don't believe it is. I think that, I'm gonna take it at face value that this was simply a jumpstart, and I don't think it can hurt. I think that if anything, it can help, you say, no, this isn't gonna do it, or wow, this is a good way to go down. So I think that this is gonna be a jumpstart, and that's why I'm gonna support it.
All right. Counselor Cameron?
Yeah, very much hear the arguments against this, and, you know, I'm, I'm gonna vote for it, but I'm not, you know, I could easily go the other way. You know, this hasn't been in committee all that long, and yeah, we could have taken it up and, you know, if, could have easily slid it into this evening's agenda and given it a vetting. But again, I'm gonna, you know, honor Counselor McCauley's word that there's no, you know, he may have some predisposed notions about this, but I don't think this is a way to further any of that. This information will be helpful. This is starting to remind me a little bit about Low Street when we were getting into sequencing, well, we can't ask for that until we do this and we get, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna be a part of that. I will say, however, though, whatever information is gleaned from this, the housing use is not gonna be something that's gonna fall on Newburyport other than perhaps the Affordable Housing Trust. I mean, this is gonna be a development deal where some nonprofit, presumably nonprofit developer, you know, if we don't sell it, if we don't blow it up, if we don't build a rocket ship, if we kinda go towards the housing angle, we'll have to pull lots of state money through various means and make that happen. But again, it is good information to have, so that's why I'm gonna vote for it.
Thank you, Counselor.
Did I miss the rocket ship? We ready?
Yes.
So it's a roll call on the motion approved as amended. Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
No.
Counselor Khan?
No.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
No.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Anything else out of Planning and Development, Counselor?
No.
All right. Public safety.
Thank you. I'll ask you to be patient with me, we have some things that are a bit out of sequence. I'm gonna ask for approval for applications 101, 102, and 106.
Second.
Thank you. And 101 is a block party on Cushion Ave. The applicant showed up, it's a side street, this is the first time they're doing it, they checked off all the boxes, et cetera, along the way. We voted three to zero to approve it. Application 102 is a block party on Olive Street, the applicant showed up, again, nothing out of the ordinary, straightforward, test two, what we're looking for. And application 106 is Newburyport Youth Hockey Day. It is tag day as it is, they sent over today a list of retailers that was there, they will be supervised from 7:00 to 2:00, there'll be no kid, you know, there'll be no unsupervised kids running around, they'll be by the retailers in a coordinated fashion. Thank you.
All right. All those in discussion, all those in favor of applications, just them off for us again?
101, 102, 106.
So I think, I, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve applications 103, 104, 105.
Second.
Great. 103 is Newburyport Half Marathon Relay. It's, the applicant, once again, the applicant was in front of us, it's nothing that has to close any streets down or anything like that, it's a relay, it's a donation based upon, to different groups, based upon what people donate their time to. The Harborside Half Marathon, this is a repeat with a different owner on this, from Cashman through the town, we've asked them to, there will be some, there's no road closures, but they'll be running along the side of the road, we've asked them to put up signage and alert, the butters on this. The difference is in, this year, they're going to end at Cashman, and they're going to have beer and wine plus food, nothing for sale, they have approval from the parks, they have approval from the Health Department, and so they are finally looking for approval from us. Application 105 is Pause for a Cause. It is going to be a walk along the rail trail, and they will have a bake sale-like environment at the end at Parker Street where people can turn around and then walk back. People are encouraged to bring their dogs and walk them along, along the way. The follow-up we said we would do is to coordinate a Health Department there, doing a raffle, which they've applied for, and we did not, we're not getting involved in approval of that, but also see if the Animal Control wanted to participate as well from an educational standpoint in that event. So, thank you.
All right, further comment, discussion? All right, all those in favor of the 103, 105, and 104, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve application 100.
Second.
This is a block party on Oakland Street, I wanted to take it separately. Typically, we have side streets and connecting streets that, this is a, this is kind of a main thoroughfare along the way. We spent an inordinate amount of time trying to have the dialogue that this isn't a normal street to close, right? A cone, a chair isn't gonna work going forward. And it's also, this happens to be 9:24 before our next meeting. So while they did get signatures, I don't necessarily think they truly understood the issue of closing the whole street of Oakland Street. In our conversation, it was suggested that it will be from Merrimack to Monroe, which will allow some side streets along the way to be, to be active. I do think that as part of our approval, we should recommend that they get a road closure sign with a sawhorse or some type of barricade from DPS or NPD going forward. Their timing on this is two to eight, excuse me, is three to 10. It'll be dark on Oakland Street. We've all heard the stories of people driving along Merrimack and deciding they're gonna turn at the last minute here or there on these connecting streets. Oakland tends to be a big one, especially across from the Boat Club, et cetera. Oakland tends to be a big one, especially across from the Boat Club, et cetera, along the way. That's our recommendation, to try to get them better signage than they could, and I think that we'll follow up with your approval, we'll follow up with the appropriate departments afterwards on this. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Z.
Yeah.
Counselor Z.
Yeah, I can't remember a time I voted no on a block party, but I think I'm going to vote no on this one. I just can't, this is a big street, and I can't, I feel like I'd be responsible if something happened. I mean, at a minimum, you'd have to talk about a detail, in my opinion, ending by like 6:40 or whatever, because sunset by 9:24, I think we're just about to dip into the 6 o'clock hour for sunsets. So I'm open if there's a suggestion on giving some latitude to somebody to fix this before 9:24, but it's possible no one wants to take that responsibility, in which case I would certainly understand. But I won't, with due respect unfortunately, to the resident, I just can't, can't get myself around it. Maybe they could pick a side street and just do that or something, but the last thing I'll say is, I have basically the same request every year on Marlboro Street for Halloween, and I tell them the same thing every year, which is, you know, do you know what it is to close a through fair between High and Water? In my case, Merrimack, same idea. And once the liability question comes up, I've never seen a block party application come in, and the PD doesn't have the resources necessarily to actually do what it would take to close that street. So that's my experience with, with that kind of sized street. So I'm very sorry for the residents. I wish, I wish we could figure something out, but I can't support this as is.
Counselor Cameron.
I'm, I'm sure this got vetted in committee, but did, did all the residents of, from Merrimack to Monroe were aware of it and didn't object or were in support of it? Do you have a sense of that?
Yeah, they weren't there.
Yeah.
But we were told that they were in approval of this, and they were looking to, you know, send out there, save the dates and, you know, coordinate things along the way. We did ask the resident to move it around the corner to Monroe. The answer was no, because they didn't know anybody on Monroe, and they wanted it here going forward. I think what your, the second guessing you had is the half-hour-long discussion we had on an application like this. But as they said, both the fire department signed off on it, and I don't necessarily think they appreciated the impact that it potentially has from a public safety standpoint.
All right.
Roll call?
Roll call.
So roll call on the motion as I understand it, which is to approve it from Merrimack Street to Monroe Street with sufficient signage and with road closures as coordinated with DPS. Time, 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Having said that, Counselor Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Z?
No.
Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Donahue?
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Preston?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
And Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Nothing else, Council President. Thank you very much.
All right. Public utilities.
Nothing tonight.
Rules. Good as the order.
I had one quick thing, if I might.
Yes.
It's a little bit out of order, if you will. I just wanted to make a public statement to say, we just had a very important, very difficult, Counselor Lane knows this, election, lot of hours, a lot of write-ins, a lot of counting, and I just wanted to do a shout-out to the board of registrars, the wards and clerks and the poll workers, and particularly the office here. Just outstanding work. Outstanding.
Nice.
Technically, myself.
Thank you. It seems like that was like a month ago. But yes, you did a great job. I think that was a very challenging. I was pleased that the new iPad sort of checked in, not, not using paper. That seemed very smooth.
That did go well.
Orderly, and nobody was hassled.
If I could read someone's mind, perhaps, we did shut off the requirement for licenses. It was not an issue.
Yes.
Counselor Con?
Can I add on?
Not requirement of license, the possibility of license.
I want to add on to that, though, and I, and I do want to thank Counselor Lane for running. I mean, it's, this is, this is democracy, this, it's great to see someone from this body, and I want to thank for all the hard work and everything you did to be present, so.
I should say, parenthetically, everyone was so professional to deal with, no matter whether they won or lost or what. Appreciate that. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Just a reminder, folks, tomorrow night, 6 o'clock upstairs is the parks.
Yes.
Yes, we've moved it upstairs. Hopefully, we'll have those owls working. So, so yes, motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.